Hey, how are you doing?
Good, good. You got your ID card so you don't get kicked out?
Yeah, yeah.
What's that?
Anything can happen.
Get you into the safe room. Your dog goes crazy. You've got a safe room back there? I was just saying to Roy Kim.
All right, Judge.
This is nice, but there's something about the old safer.
Welcome, everybody.
Talking to my heart.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, everybody, for coming to support your elected officials, uh, starting their next term in office. We have, uh, four of us getting sworn in. Uh, myself, um, Councilmember Legay, Councilmember Elke, and Councilmember Dickey. So, thank you very much for coming. Uh, we've each asked, uh, a friend to swear us in. Um, there's a lot of choices, of course. Um, I've got the honor of having our honorable Judge Ted Armbruster to swear me in to, uh, my second term. And thank you for, friends and family, for coming out today. And, uh, when you want to take a picture, come on up. We can stop after the swearing in and get a picture of each one of the electeds if you have the camera to come forward with. But we'll get things started. And then, uh, who's next up, Beth?
Uh, that would be Councilmember Dickey.
Councilmember Dickey's next. What's that?
Alphabetical.
Alphabetical order. All right. Well, thank you, Judge, for swearing me in.
And a hundred years.
All right.
Thank you very much. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
And your family's ready too, out there?
Yes.
Okay. If you would repeat after me.
Aye.
State your name.
Jay Schlum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of town mayor.
Discharge the duties of the office of town mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you very much, Judge.
Congratulations. [applause] Curly? Curly?
I'm all ready.
Okay. [laughter] Councilmember Dickey.
I didn't break the microphone. Here you are.
Thank you. Want to do it this way or they did it?
Sure.
[laughing]
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
I state your name.
I, Ginny Dickey.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the office of town council member.
Of the office of town council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. [applause]
Each of the newly elected, uh, officials or re-elected officials will, um, offer a word or two, maybe a minute or two, um, if you wish. And then, uh, we'll move on to the excitement of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District meeting. We will take a pause after these words to allow the room to clear likely. But again, thank everybody for coming. It, uh, means a great deal to have you here as supporters and citizens, uh, supporting our community. So, thank you very much. Um, I guess we can go in the same order if, uh, if we shall. Um, I, I first want to thank my family for being there and, uh, taking the pictures tonight and being there, um, keeping the home fires burning during long council meetings and, um, being the biggest supporters of my, uh, being mayor for our beautiful town of Fountain Hills. And it's, of course, my honor to serve, uh, this community. And it'll be my honor to continue to serve in the second term, um, as mayor. And I thank you very much for the community's support and assistance in helping me to do the best job I can as the mayor. I want to thank, uh, the campaign team as well for being great supporters. Um, we are fortunate to be uncontested this time, which was a real, um, blessing. So, appreciate the confidence that, uh, the community has in, in me, but also the council, the, uh, campaign team, thank you for being there, uh, to help the, the campaign effort. Um, other than that, I look forward to a great next two years of my term with, uh, this council. I have a great deal of confidence in every one of them. And I'm excited to have a new council member here to join us, uh, Councilman Elke, uh, to bring a new perspective as well and to, um, be a participant in, in a great dialogue up here, uh, during important times of our, um, town council. And I'll certainly miss Councilmember Mike Archambeau after so many great years of serving us. And I know he'll continue to be a great supporter of our community. And I also want to thank the staff for being such a great supporter for the last two years and look forward to getting, uh, more out of our town staff, even with less resources. So, appreciate the ongoing support of town staff in helping our community to be the best community in the world. So, thank you very much. Now, councilmember?
Dickey.
Dickey.
Thank you. I was asking my husband, Jim, to administer the oath. And I was going to say, because he always has my back, but I figured that didn't work too good for Sandra Bullock, so, uh, I, [laughing]. So, I'll just say that it's only fitting that he would be the one to launch me for the next four years of service to the community because public service has always been very important to him. As a matter of fact, he did it before. I was going through when Jerry Moll was doing the history. I was looking through old pictures. I found this 1998 picture when I'd gotten re-elected to school board. Jim was the, uh, president at the time. So, he actually, uh, administered that oath to me then. It was very similar, except now, uh, he had to stay for that whole meeting, but he gets to go home after this one. But I do want to thank Jim. I want to thank my family and all my friends, um, and the staff for all of their lessons and giving to the community. And I certainly appreciate that the voters have given me the opportunity and the privilege to continue to serve Fountain Hills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do it close to the picture?
Oh, the picture. No, I have black hair.
[laughing] Councilmember Elke, welcome.
Well, first and foremost, uh, I wouldn't be sitting up here today if it wasn't for the love and support of my wife, Michelle, who, uh, helped me through, uh, the election time, which was tough at times. And, uh, she kept the books in order and, uh, took care of the treasurer duties. And, uh, again, without your love and support, Michelle, I wouldn't be here today. I love you. Um, I would also like to thank my, um, my election team, my election committee, I should say, and those that stood out in the rain and the cold not too long ago on Election Day. And it was cold out there. And I want to say thank you to many of you that are in here tonight and those that you are, that are at home watching this. I appreciate and, um, respect you all for supporting me as much as you did, and I will definitely not let you down. Uh, to the residents of the town of Fountain Hills, who I haven't had the opportunity to meet, I look forward to the next four years to getting to know all of you. And as, uh, The Times did a, uh, a, uh, an article on me recently, some of you may have seen it. Um, but I, I truly do have an open door policy. If you can't, uh, reach me in person, please don't hesitate to call me, phone me. I definitely want to hear your concerns because I'm here, up here to serve you and not myself or any special interests. So, thank you again for all your support. I appreciate it, and, uh, I look forward to the next four years. Thank you.
[applause] Councilmember Legay.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. And thank you all for being here this evening. It's, it's good to see council chambers, uh, full. Uh, when I walked in, I thought maybe we were discussing single trash hauler tonight and with, with, with the crowd we have here. But, uh, for those of you that came for that, don't be disappointed. We'll be having that discussion in, in August. Uh, but on a more serious note, um, I want to thank my, my family, my wife, Janet, who's here this evening, and my, my youngest daughter, Marissa, my oldest just graduated from high school, for their support over the last four years. And when it came time to discuss the next four years, uh, their, their encouragement, and I appreciate that. I want to give thanks to my core campaign team, which included my wife and, um, my treasurer, Carl, and my webmaster, Tim, and my communication folks, um, Beulah, and, um, and, and many, many, many other folks, um, and dozens of folks that helped out during Election Day, as, as Tate mentioned. And for those of you that were there, it was, uh, it was quite an experience. And, um, the weather was awesome. We thought we were campaigning back in the Midwest, but that, that certainly was not the case. And last, but of course not least, um, I have to thank the, the people that had the, um, how would you say, trust to elect me once again to the next four years. And I too am honored to serve. Uh, it's a privilege to serve. And as we all know, in these times, they're extremely challenging times. Um, we've had a challenge, as the state has, with, uh, our budget. We'll continue with that struggle. We'll continue with our financial struggles probably for the next couple of years. So, I'm really looking forward to working with our newest member and, um, and the rest of council to, uh, help us to continue to manage our way through this crisis and come out on the other side. Thank you so much.
All right. Um, we'll take about five minutes, uh, say hello to your friends that came here to support one another and, uh, come back up here. We'll get the meeting started at six twenty, or, yeah, six twenty-five for the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
[inaudible]
I didn't want to forget you. Congratulations.
All right, fine. How are you doing?
I'm doing.
Good. Oh, I liked that outfit you got on. I really liked it.
How do you get your machine?
No, I do. I really do.
I like the machine goes through the door already? Does that machine go through the door? You know, I, you know? Yeah, I saw it come in one night. You better watch out. He comes fast. [laughing]
[inaudible]
All right, fine. How are you doing?
I'm doing.
Good. Oh, I liked that outfit you got on. I really liked it.
How do you get your machine?
No, I do. I really do.
I like the machine goes through the door already? Does that machine go through the door? You know, I, you know? Yeah, I saw it come in one night. You better watch out. He comes fast. [laughing]
All right, fine. How are you doing?
I'm doing.
Good. Oh, I liked that outfit you got on. I really liked it.
How do you get your machine?
No, I do. I really do.
I like the machine goes through the door already? Does that machine go through the door? You know, I, you know? Yeah, I saw it come in one night. You better watch out. He comes fast. [laughing]
All right. Thanks for swearing me in.
Please, please, raise your right hand. I.
I, Kate Elke.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the office of town council member.
Of the office of town council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. [applause]
Each of the newly elected, uh, officials or re-elected officials will, um, offer a word or two, maybe a minute or two, um, if you wish. And then, uh, we'll move on to the excitement of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District meeting. We will take a pause after these words to allow the room to clear likely. But again, thank everybody for coming. It, uh, means a great deal to have you here as supporters and citizens, uh, supporting our community. So, thank you very much. Um, I guess we can go in the same order if, uh, if we shall. Um, I, I first want to thank my family for being there and, uh, taking the pictures tonight and being there, um, keeping the home fires burning during long council meetings and, um, being the biggest supporters of my, uh, being mayor for our beautiful town of Fountain Hills. And it's, of course, my honor to serve, uh, this community. And it'll be my honor to continue to serve in the second term, um, as mayor. And I thank you very much for the community's support and assistance in helping me to do the best job I can as the mayor. I want to thank, uh, the campaign team as well for being great supporters. Um, we are fortunate to be uncontested this time, which was a real, um, blessing. So, appreciate the confidence that, uh, the community has in, in me, but also the council, the, uh, campaign team, thank you for being there, uh, to help the, the campaign effort. Um, other than that, I look forward to a great next two years of my term with, uh, this council. I have a great deal of confidence in every one of them, and I'm excited to have a new council member here to join us, uh, Councilman Elke, uh, to bring a new perspective as well and to, um, be a participant in, in a great dialogue up here, uh, during important times of our, um, town council. And I'll certainly miss Councilmember Mike Archambeau after so many great years of serving us. And I know he'll continue to be a great supporter of our community. And I also want to thank the staff for being such a great supporter for the last two years and look forward to getting, uh, more out of our town staff, even with less resources. So, appreciate the ongoing support of town staff in helping our community to be the best community in the world. So, thank you very much. Now, councilmember?
Dickey.
Dickey.
Thank you. I was asking my husband, Jim, to administer the oath. And I was going to say, because he always has my back, but I figured that didn't work too good for Sandra Bullock, so, uh, I, [laughing]. So, I'll just say that it's only fitting that he would be the one to launch me for the next four years of service to the community because public service has always been very important to him. As a matter of fact, he did it before. I was going through when Jerry Moll was doing the history. I was looking through old pictures. I found this 1998 picture when I'd gotten re-elected to school board. Jim was the, uh, president at the time. So, he actually, uh, administered that oath to me then. It was very similar, except now, uh, he had to stay for that whole meeting, but he gets to go home after this one. But I do want to thank Jim. I want to thank my family and all my friends, um, and the staff for all of their lessons and giving to the community. And I certainly appreciate that the voters have given me the opportunity and the privilege to continue to serve Fountain Hills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do it close to the picture?
Oh, the picture. No, I have black hair.
[laughing] Councilmember Elke, welcome.
Well, first and foremost, uh, I wouldn't be sitting up here today if it wasn't for the love and support of my wife, Michelle, who, uh, helped me through, uh, the election time, which was tough at times. And, uh, she kept the books in order and, uh, took care of the treasurer duties. And, uh, again, without your love and support, Michelle, I wouldn't be here today. I love you. Um, I would also like to thank my, um, my election team, my election committee, I should say, and those that stood out in the rain and the cold not too long ago on Election Day. And it was cold out there. And I want to say thank you to many of you that are in here tonight and those that you are, that are at home watching this. I appreciate and, um, respect you all for supporting me as much as you did, and I will definitely not let you down. Uh, to the residents of the town of Fountain Hills, who I haven't had the opportunity to meet, I look forward to the next four years to getting to know all of you. And as, uh, The Times did a, uh, a, uh, an article on me recently, some of you may have seen it. Um, but I, I truly do have an open door policy. If you can't, uh, reach me in person, please don't hesitate to call me, phone me. I definitely want to hear your concerns because I'm here, up here to serve you and not myself or any special interests. So, thank you again for all your support. I appreciate it, and, uh, I look forward to the next four years. Thank you.
[applause] Councilmember Legay.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. And thank you all for being here this evening. It's, it's good to see council chambers, uh, full. Uh, when I walked in, I thought maybe we were discussing single trash hauler tonight and with, with, with the crowd we have here. But, uh, for those of you that came for that, don't be disappointed. We'll be having that discussion in, in August. Uh, but on a more serious note, um, I want to thank my, my family, my wife, Janet, who's here this evening, and my, my youngest daughter, Marissa, my oldest just graduated from high school, for their support over the last four years. And when it came time to discuss the next four years, uh, their, their encouragement, and I appreciate that. I want to give thanks to my core campaign team, which included my wife and, um, my treasurer, Carl, and my webmaster, Tim, and my communication folks, um, Beulah, and, um, and, and many, many, many other folks, um, and dozens of folks that helped out during Election Day, as, as Tate mentioned. And for those of you that were there, it was, uh, it was quite an experience. And, um, the weather was awesome. We thought we were campaigning back in the Midwest, but that, that certainly was not the case. And last, but of course not least, um, I have to thank the, the people that had the, um, how would you say, trust to elect me once again to the next four years. And I too am honored to serve. Uh, it's a privilege to serve. And as we all know, in these times, they're extremely challenging times. Um, we've had a challenge, as the state has, with, uh, our budget. We'll continue with that struggle. We'll continue with our financial struggles probably for the next couple of years. So, I'm really looking forward to working with our newest member and, um, and the rest of council to, uh, help us to continue to manage our way through this crisis and come out on the other side. Thank you so much.
All right. Um, we'll take about five minutes, uh, say hello to your friends that came here to support one another and, uh, come back up here. We'll get the meeting started at six twenty, or, yeah, six twenty-five for the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
[inaudible]
I didn't want to forget you. Congratulations.
All right, fine. How are you doing?
I'm doing.
Good. Oh, I liked that outfit you got on. I really liked it.
How do you get your machine?
No, I do. I really do.
I like the machine goes through the door already? Does that machine go through the door? You know, I, you know? Yeah, I saw it come in one night. You better watch out. He comes fast. [laughing]
[inaudible]
All right, fine. How are you doing?
I'm doing.
Good. Oh, I liked that outfit you got on. I really liked it.
How do you get your machine?
No, I do. I really do.
I like the machine goes through the door already? Does that machine go through the door? You know, I, you know? Yeah, I saw it come in one night. You better watch out. He comes fast. [laughing]
Have another hand.
Yeah. Well, Mary, how you doing? Good. Good.
Good to see you. Yeah. Pretty well. You? Good. Good.
We're leaving. We're getting, getting kind of done. We came to what we intend to do.
Good. Good for you.
We came, we came, we're ready to come forward. We're ready. I don't have to sit here for the next hour and a half or two hours. One thing I want to know, where's my cooler? Oh, bother me. Oh. Yeah. I see you in the morning. Okay. Thanks for coming. Yeah. That's why I did. Okay, go ahead. Okay. They got the name, right? They got it? Yeah, they did. Hey, girl. [inaudible]
They're supposed to be a lot like.
They can't be a year. Yeah. 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 Yeah.[1270.33]
Michelle, now finally. Oh, she held that so tightly. Aye, aye. Which one? Yeah, okay, I recharge. Oh, thank you. He goes that way. All right, council.
Hi, Rick. How are you doing?
All right, Councilmember Legay.
Had to say hello before he gets started. How you doing, Dennis? Good.
Aye.
Call the public regular meeting. Call the public at the regular meeting. All righty. All right, we'll get started with the, um, special session of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board Meeting. Call to order. Roll call, please, Bev.
Chairman Schlum?
Here.
Board member Cantino?
Here.
Board member Legay?
Here.
Board member Brown?
Here.
Vice Chair Hanson?
Here.
Board member Elke?
Here.
Board member Dickey?
Here.
Thank you very much. Anyone call the public for this meeting?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. First item on the agenda is consideration of approving the Eagle Mountain Community Facility District Board, District Board Meeting minutes of July 2, 2009.
So moved. Second?
Right. Any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven, zero.
Thank you. Item two, consideration resolution E M C F D 2010 dash zero one approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2010, ending June 30, 2011, setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments.
So moved.
We get him a second?
Second.
All right, Mary.
Members of the board, uh, this item is actually the approval of the budget for the Cottonwood Maintenance District for fiscal year 2010, 2011. The total expenditures in the budget are $3,315, which equates to an assessment of approximately $57.15 per household.
Ms. Martin, are you speaking on Eagle Mountain?
Cottonwood Maintenance.
We're on Eagle Mountain one.
Oh, sorry.
No problem, thank you. Councilmember Dickey?
The Eagle Mountain, the Eagle Mountain expenditure is $414,626, which is approximately a dollar twenty-nine per hundred dollars of assessed valuation.
Very good. Anything further?
Unless the, uh, board has any questions.
All right, good, thank you. Any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Ms. Fisher, you're good? Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any que, other questions or discussion from the district? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven, zero.
All right, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Now move to our, call the special session of the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board Meeting. Roll call, please.
Chair Schlum?
Here.
Board member Dickey?
Here.
Board member Elke?
Here.
Board member Brown?
Here.
Vice Chair Hanson?
Here.
Board member Legay?
Here.
Board member Cantino?
Here.
Thank you very much. Anyone call the public for Cottonwoods?
No, sir.
Thank you. First item is consideration of approving the Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board Meeting minutes of July 2, 2009. We get a motion?
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven, zero.
Thank you. Item two, consideration resolution C M D 2010 dash zero one approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2010, ending June 30, 2011, and setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments. We get a motion?
So moved. Second?
All right, thank you. Mary. Cottonwoods, I think you started this one.
I think you heard this one already. Members of the board, the expenditures in the budget for fiscal year 2010, 2011 are $3,315, which equates to an assessment of $57.15 per household.
Very good.
Any questions?
Any questions? All right, we got a motion and a second. All in, uh, any speakers on this one?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven, zero.
Thank you. Look for a motion to adjourn the Cottonwoods meeting.
So moved. Second?
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Thank you very much. Does anyone need a break before we get into the next meeting? Our real meeting, the real, regular session. I think we're ready to go. Since we're after 6:30, are we ready to go, Bev?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All righty. All right, we'll move into the regular meeting of the town council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for invocation. Pastor Fulton. Welcome, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
Bring you greetings from the fountains where we have synagogue on Friday night, Lutherans on Saturday night, Methodist on Sunday, and starting Monday Buddhists. So, trying to be your one-stop spiritual shop in Fountain Hills. Let's pray. Spirit of life, fill us to overflowing. Even as we might express differences of opinion and points of view, remind us of our common love for this community of Fountain Hills. Help us to remember the circumstances of the least among us, that we may be faithful stewards of the many gifts you've given us. Empower us to be people of goodwill, of humility, and service. And we pray in the name of the Spirit who is so mysterious that no one name can suffice. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Fulton. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlum?
Here.
Councilmember Cantino?
Here.
Councilmember Legay?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Council, uh, Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Thank you very much. Now move to scheduled public appearance of presentations. Uh, we have a rotation of the Vice Mayor position, which, uh, goes to Councilmember Dennis Brown. This is a Vice Mayor position that Councilmember Hanson did a great job with over the past eight months, and the Vice Mayor fills in for the Mayor during absences or if there's a disability. Hopefully not. But, uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson, and I look forward to Councilmember Brown doing a good job over the next eight months. So with that, we have the, uh, nameplates to change out here, and I'll ask Councilmember Hanson to help if you can with yours.
Yeah, I did this last time.
Did you?
Forget it, I'm doing it this time.
Okay. Councilmember Brown. Now Vice Mayor Brown. Thank you. It's going to be your first duty to fix that on your name. Plate.
He leaned right over.
Yeah. I wasn't sure. Thank you very much, Kathy. All right, now we will go into call to the public. We have a couple speaker cards for the council meeting tonight.
Mayor, we have three cards. Rick Melendez, followed by Harris Deech, and then Vincent Marcello.
Very good, thank you. And councilmembers, please remember to speak into the microphones. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor Brown, council members and staff. You know, seven and a half years ago, I stood in the old building, uh, in front of the dais, and I was given the oath of office by Judge Shoup. It was a very proud moment for me. My wife was in the audience, was taking pictures, one of them, which I still have in my garage, which showed my good friend Bev Bender on the left hand. Hi, how come you're on with the right now? And, uh, but I thought would be appropriate for me to get up and, and speak to you and tell you what an honor it was and a privilege to have served in this town council for our community. And how honored, uh, I believe the community is to have all of you here, uh, to spend the time and energy that you do, that you're required to do when you're a council member. I, um, wish you the very best, and I want to congratulate, uh, Mayor Schlum and the new elected member Tate Elke, and of course, uh, Councilmember Dickey and Councilmember Legay. Uh, good friends. Uh, but for you, sir, uh, I want you to, uh, remember some of the things that I used to say in the council. This is just good advice, I hope you take it in the right manner. Always be positive. Uh, remember to compromise. Uh, respect the staff. And, uh, most of all, you know, have fun. Uh, I think many of us take ourselves too serious. We're only here for a little bit. We have to enjoy what we're doing. I know you have a large task ahead of you, and, uh, I just want to let you know, all of you, that I respect what you do, and I pray to God that he gives you continued positive health so that you continue the effort to bring the town of Fountain Hills, uh, to the level of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service, too.
Harris Deech?
Welcome, Mr. Deech.
Thank you. Um, how you doing? Good? Uh, this is fun, but I have three minutes and you can't respond. That sounds like my wife, so don't worry about it. Uh, I drive around town, which we all do a lot, and town is beautiful, but there's certain areas that are just not cool, you know? I came up with a way, I believe, that costs town nothing, a beautification program. For example, that Circle K with the McDonald's, that is really like grossed out looking place. But the golf course in town, Sunrise County, has these big hedges and bushes with white flowers on it. Why can't you make some kind of rule or something that these, um, strip centers have to make this, buy these bushes and make it a lot more attractive than what it is now? That's the first one, uh, that always comes to mind. Even in Target Center, you use some more palm trees that they could pay for, and you try, you drive up to Saguaro, you run across other strip centers that really look terrible. So if we get these bushes in that they had to pay for, white or purple, whatever colors they're in, like they look beautiful going by the golf course, that would kind of, somebody driving by say, this is a really cool place to live. Uh, I had more time to go, but I think that's about it. You got the picture. No other center, you go drive yourself, you know, so, thank you very much. Jay, congratulations, everybody, Jenny, my man Tate over there, and Henry, and all you guys that I've never known, but now I do, so, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Deech.
Vincent Marcello?
Welcome, Mr. Marcello.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, I just took a quick thought in reading the local paper, and we've got a situation where I understand that you're looking to hire the Director of Development Services. I thought we had a hiring freeze in this town. But if I'm wrong in that, and there is a hiring, if there is not a hiring freeze, one might want to consider some of the staff members you already have that could fulfill this position. I think you have some expertise in your engineering department. Randy Harrell, I think, would qualify very well for this position. Uh, the money you could save in not hiring, I think, could be put better, to better use, but I just thought I'd bring it to your attention in case somebody didn't look at it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marcello. All right, now we'll move on into our consent agenda. Items one through four, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor, seven, zero?
Thank you very much. Move into our regular agenda. Item number five, consideration resolution 2010 dash 22, adopting the tentative budget and the maximum amount for the town of Fountain Hills fiscal year 2010, 11. Budget with appropriate direction to publish said document. Mary, Ms. Martin?
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, the item before you tonight is the continuing discussion of the tentative budget and a motion to approve a resolution setting the maximum amount of the town's budget for fiscal year 2010, 2011 at $33,627,020. The setting of this maximum budget amount does not preclude the council from continuing to request changes to the tentative budget beyond tonight, as long as the cumulative effect of those changes do not exceed the adopted maximum. I thought it might be helpful to the public to review the process we've been through with the proposed budget so far, um, before beginning with tonight's discussion. The budget was presented to the town council at the May 6 fork study, and discussion continued at the council meeting on May 20th. Following that meeting, the changes that were suggested by council were incorporated into the tentative budget, and those pages were updated and presented to council. Um, the following presentation is a summary of what has occurred to date so that if, uh, members of the public hadn't been following it, we can bring them up to date quickly.
Can we hit the first bank of lights there? Thank you. How to put it into the slideshow?
No, I'm looking for slideshow. Bev, do you know how to do?
There you go.
Some of the things that have already occurred were the reorganization of town departments, combining public works and, um, planning and zoning to form development services, and park and recreation with the community center to form community services. There's been a reduction in staff from the approved 81 F T E last year to 61 F T E in the coming year. Uh, there was a reduction in the transfer of construction sales tax to the C I P from 85% to 50%, and an increase in the hotel bed tax from 3% to 5%. It also includes an updating of the comprehensive fee schedule and the adding of new fees. Uh, there were changes in many service areas throughout, um, the programs in, in town. Uh, we did find the money to maintain the scheduled runtime of the fountain, um, but we did eliminate the public information division. We've postponed all major capital expenditures, deferred some preventive maintenance, um, providing custodial services in public areas only, uh, reduced park and median landscape maintenance, and eliminated certain town programs such as Concerts in the Park, Oktoberfest, uh, the recycling that was done in the town's parking lot.
Mayor, if I could on that item, I think we spoke to it last time. We're looking to be more of a, what Brian, I think, stated, use a facilitator of those events. We'd love those events to continue and expect most of them will continue, but just the funding for, from the town may be difficult to, to find this year.
And I think we were very lucky on Friday when Sears committed to, um, donating the funds that might allow us to continue Concerts in the Park at least through the following year.
That's terrific.
Um, also was the inclusion of community service contracts in the general fund, and I listed the contract amounts that are now included in the budget. Uh, the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce at $129,000, the Community Theater at $90,300, the Boys and Girls Club contract at $100,000, and the Food Bank at $37,840. And you'll see these included in the town manager's budget. Um, in the subsidies for park and recreation and senior recreation programs, um, the overall subsidy was reduced from 63% to 41.7%. Uh, that still leaves a subsidy for those programs of $106,905 in next year's budget. In senior programs, the overall subsidy increased from 46.4% to 61.2%. Um, that's increasing the subsidy, uh, in 2010, 11 to $99,732. Um, the Saguaro Boulevard Mill and Overlay project in the capital improvement plan was rescheduled to fiscal year 2011, 2012. There's one item that's not on here that I, that I wanted to mention, and that is almost a thank you to, uh, M C S O and Rural Metro for foregoing their contracted, um, rate increases next year because they recognize the difficult situation that the town is in financially. Um, that leaves us with the, the breakdown of what we are looking to do here tonight, which is to adopt the maximum budget amount for fiscal year 2010, 2011. And what that's basically saying is if the council were to adopt that maximum tonight, um, the changes that we make going forward in the budget, as long as those changes do not increase the budget beyond the $33,627,020, um, setting the limit tonight would, would basically not create any difficulties. Uh, we would still be able to make, uh, internal changes, reduce some items, increase other items, as long as we don't exceed that maximum. What I'd like to do is to walk the, the council through the budget document in the operating budgets section, and the various budget managers are here to address any questions that might arise.
Very good. Council, any questions or comments on the slides that were presented? I wanted to point out one thing. Um, it looked like, um, some of the subsidy were increasing, some were decreasing, and I think to the extent that now we, uh, under our, um, cost budgeting or, um, capturing soft costs in addition to hard costs, I think some of those subsidies have changed just due to the fact that we're now capturing or assigning cost, um, to different areas where we, we weren't capturing that in the past. Is that correct?
That is correct. For example, in the home delivered meals program, which I think the council is, is familiar with, in the past, we would have called the cost of the program, our contract with Fountain View Village, for the provision of meals. Um, now included in that cost is the cost of the home delivered meals coordinator, all of the supplies like the hot bags and the cold bags, and all of the supplies that are necessary for the program, as well as, um, the cost of the meals themselves. Uh, we still do not charge overhead costs to any program, so these are direct costs only.
Good, I just wanted to point that one out in particular because it looked like if the subsidy was increasing, it, it drew a different picture, and in reality, it's just how we're accounting for things now, and in fact, the cost did go up slightly to the, uh, people that are, uh, getting the meals.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, good, so walk through the budget, the operating budget, and, uh, council, anytime you want to stop and ask a question on these, each budget item, feel free to do so. Councilmember Legay?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Mary, prior to getting into the operating budget, um, I noticed, uh, in the prior section, a few inconsistencies. I know that we've changed our numbers a number of times, and they're more editorial types of comments, um, numbers that hadn't been transposed or changed. Would you like me to run through those? I have four or five of them at this point.
That'll be fine.
Okay. On page 28, we just talked about, um, on our slide, we talked about the notion of the 85% going to 50%, and as you all know, on page 28, and, uh, under Capital Projects, it still states 85%. And I just wanted to point that out, and I know we haven't approved that resolution, and, and that might be the reason why it hasn't changed, but I just wanted to point that out, bring that to your attention.
That has been noted because until council acts on that, we've retained it at 85%.
Very good. Very good. On page 45? It's, um, under Capital Projects Fund Overview, it talks about street sidewalk projects, that 10 million, you haven't taken the 4.5 million out, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to point that out. On page 46, also, it talks about bond proceeds of 4.5 million, which also needs to be edited, and once again, these are things you'll probably be catching up with. On page 62, since our last meeting, our numbers changed a little on our general fund, and on that chart, you have 12.7 million, and I believe it should be 12.6 million, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a new.
Thank you.
Let me see which slide you're looking at.
Page 62.
It's a different page now, I believe.
Yes.
I think that slide might be gone.
It is gone.
It is gone.
Okay, very good. Page 94. Oh, I am into the operating budget at this point, but this is once again more of an editorial change. Once again, I'm very sensitive to the organizational chart where it says Deputy Town Manager, we need to have slash Finance Director.
That is correct. Data ready.
Okay, very good. On page 108, and this is, this is just a matter of transposing since our last deal. On that chart there, under Community Contracts, it has the number $338,340, and our new adjusted is $357,140. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Minor, but just thought we'd catch him. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Counsel member Dickey.
Mayor, on page 26, it says Reserve for Organizational Chart, so I'm assuming that will be there. And then on page 28, under Development Fee Fund, says Development Fees Must Be Expended Within Six Years of Collection or Refunded to the Taxpayer. And that sentence shouldn't be there. That's on the last part of Fund 710-770. At least not yet.
I believe you're correct.
Thank you.
All right. Now take it away, Mary.
I'll start with the Mayor and Council's Budget on page 87. The Mayor and Council's Budget for fiscal year '09-10 was $85,640. As you can see, the budget for 10-11 is $72,427, which is a reduction of 15.4%. The item that represents the most significant change from one year to the next is a number of the discretionary funds that council had had in the budget for special-type projects that might be assigned to staff was removed. There's also reductions in participation in the league and pretty much across the board in all line items. If there's any additional questions on council?
Thank you.
Counsel member Hanson.
Just real quick, what is the communications expense? It seems like we've gone three years and we didn't have that in there.
Are you referring to the Internal Service Charge?
No. It's about midway, it's, let's see.
On the graph on page 86.
I'm on 86.
Is that the percentage charged across all departments now? Or that's?
No, that was the Internal Service.
That's the Internal Service, that's true. Yep, know what that $476 includes?
Typically included in communications expenses are things like cell phones. Let me look, and I can give you the specific detail.
Thanks. Good.
It's listed as cellphone service, but I don't have detail on what that is, whose cellphone that represents.
We may not need that. If it's for Mayor and Council, we haven't included that before. I don't think we've ever had it. Looks like several years ago, there was a hundred dollars charge, so maybe.
So we just found $476,000.
There you go.
I like it, boy.
Makes the maximum easier to do it up.
There you go. Good. Any other questions on Mayor and Town Council Budget?
The next budget would be for the Municipal Court. The court's budget for this fiscal year was $397,528. The proposed budget for next year is $421,291, which is an increase of about 6%. A portion of that is coming from contracted salary increases in that department.
And also, there was, I'm not sure where it might be accounted for in there, but there's also, I think, an additional grant that is coming in this year that you have to budget for as an expenditure. I think that may be one of the items that are.
One of the things that was fortunate for us this year is that the judge was able to secure a grant for $40,000, and that grant will be used to help offset the costs of the orders of protection that the court issues.
Counsel member Oki.
This is really a follow-up on counsel member Hanson's question. There's a communication expense in here as well, $2,379. Previous year, it was zero. And the year before that, it was $550. Is this cellphone as well, or is this something else?
That's what it is.
The telecom?
Well, it's telecommunications charges in general. It includes typically cellphone service, desk service, the hard-wired service on each person's desk. It also includes their internet service and their network connection.
Is there, did things change from how they were expensed or allocated from last year to this year?
In the past, we had an overhead department called Operating Support, and all of those costs that were shared costs were in that Operating Support Program. This year, the only thing remaining in Operating Support is the town's contingency.
Okay, so would that be the likely explanation of this?
That's the explanation you'll see consistently throughout the budget, where you see increases in communications costs. It's because in prior years, all that existed in that category was cellphone service, and now that includes the three other items as well.
Counsel member Leger.
With that clarification, then, when we move back to the Mayor and Town? When we move back to the Mayor and Town Council Budget, then, although you stated cellphone, and we don't have cellphone charges.
It probably relates to then desktop.
Relates to his, the mayor's computer and the phone on his desktop because he does have an office.
That is correct.
Just, you know, I'm not sure if the $476 is the total amount or what the case is, so. Anyhow, just wanted to make that clarification before we whip that out of the budget. Thank you.
Got any other, anything else to go over on the court, Municipal Court Budget? Since we started with two kind of softball operational department things, I wanted to see, counsel, do you like the way we're going through this? Is this a good way to go through it? Counsel member Hanson.
We could probably expedite if staff could just go back. And like, if there is something from zero, and all of a sudden, there is a dollar amount, just like a little footnote, because actually, we could go through each one of the budgets and go, why did this go up? Why did this go down? And that, I think that would save a lot of time.
Agreed. We did talk about that last time. Is that something that you probably see in our final budget?
One of the difficulties that we're having is having changed computer systems with last year's budget. All of the history prior to that is in our now defunct computer system. But we could, with some effort, try to make that tie a little clearer because we had a totally different chart of accounts than we do now. And so to make the one-on-one correlation is sometimes a little difficult. But we can definitely do it from last year to this year and point out any significant change.
So for tonight, we should probably just, we should bring them up, unless perhaps it's that communication expense item. If we're comfortable, assuming we know what that is and we're comfortable with it, we may not need to bring it up, but.
Well, because it's referred to two ways, telecommunications and communications. So are they the same, or are they two separate things?
And Mayor?
Counsel member Dickey.
Maybe also look in terms of the amounts, too. I mean, you know, if it's a big difference, then we would have to get an explanation. But if it's not that much, then we know that you've been going through this transition. And also, I had a question about revenue, one of those also. So whenever, if, I don't know, we're probably not going through the revenue, but something that was noteworthy kind of along that line because it was a little bit of a big amount, which had to do with interest income. So I don't know if you're able to answer that now. But on the revenue, I think it was part of our packet, said interest on investments went way, like, from $125,000 to $10,000. And then there was another one that I had a question about, which was in lieu payments on LTAS, something that went from $2,000 to $15,000, which, just to find out exactly why that happened.
Our interests, currently, all of our invested funds are with the state pool. And because of the nature of the state pool's investment philosophy, our interest rates are significantly down. We've been averaging over the last couple of months something like 0.2% interest on our funds, which is why I think Julie Getty came to you a while ago about revising our investment policy to try to get a better return on our investments with maintaining some semblance of security for the funds, but with a better outlook and a different philosophy.
So, Mayor, Mary, that's not money that's gone. I mean, where is that money? It was, we saw the same principal amount, but instead of $125,000, it's $10,000.
Interest earned.
So, right, in interest earned. So who got the interest? Or where's, what happened to the principal amount? That stayed the same?
The principal amount stayed the same.
So was this a result of any kind of a legislative thing that happened with investment pools in the state?
I think it's just a significant change in the state of the economy and the fact that on short-term investments, and the state pool almost acts as a money market account. There's no commitment to holding the money for any length of time. So you can invest today and pull your money out tomorrow. And because of that, it pays a very low interest rate.
Okay. Mayor, Andrew, you don't know of any, anything that was changed in that way through the legislature?
Mr. Mayor, counsel member Dickey, I don't recall in the last changes of ASRS or any of the pool legislation, I don't believe it impacted that as well. I think what we're seeing is just literally 10 times reduction in the amount of interest that we're being paid from the fund.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, when you mentioned 2/10ths of a percent interest, is that annually?
That's what the average annual rate has been over the last month.
Thanks. Was there another revenue item you wanted to?
Well, oh, sorry, the revenue under LTAS said in lieu payments. I wanted to know what a definition of that is, and then also why it's going from, and this is revenue, $2,000 to $15,000 coming in.
These are revenues collected primarily from encroachment permits, and they are payments made by those people. How am I going to say this?
Is this LTAS?
It's returning to the streets fund because it's the street fund that paid for the expenses of repaving the road. And these are funds in lieu of the developer repaving the road. They pay us the funds so that we can repave the road. And we've made a major effort since the new software to chase encroachment permits.
Okay, thank you.
Good, all right. Thank you, Mary. So generally, and like we just did there, we can, following the operational budget or if it's related revenues to the operational budget, feel free to bring up anything that may be in another budget item area or following our operational budget review. We can go into the bonds or into the capital, whatever you wish. On the Administration?
In Administration, the first division that you're seeing is the Town Managers Division. Last current-year budget is $728,543. The proposed budget for next year is $661,762. The reductions there are primarily in the area of community service contracts. And the rest are basically line item reductions throughout the rest of the department.
Counsel member Hanson.
Mary, would it be possible, without a whole lot of effort, for each one of the divisions, like in the Administration Budget, to do the line item pages on them as well, rather than just the budget highlight pages?
On a divisional basis? That could be done.
That would be, that would be good. That'd be helpful.
Any other questions in the Town Managers Division? The next division would be the Town Clerk. The Town Clerk's budget went from $193,067 to $134,389, which is a reduction of about 30.4%. The primary reason for that is that there is one fewer election scheduled for next year than there was in this year's budget.
Counsel member Hanson.
Now, it looks like Bev is getting picked on here. Her internal service charges are over $4,000, and the manager's is only $475.
Also included in internal service charges is photocopies, and she prints a lot.
You could share.
I don't print. She's very green, though. This is a minimal amount of printing. Any other questions on the Town Clerk portion? All right.
The next division would be Human Resources and Risk Management. This year's budget is $575,851. Proposed for next year is $483,947. The primary reductions are in the insurance liability area. The Human Resources Department is actually picking up expenses from other areas. Each individual department used to budget for their own training costs, and we thought it would be more productive to have a centralized management of training opportunities throughout the town. So all of the employee-related training costs are now centralized in the HR department. So you won't see training expenses in each individual department in this budget.
So that's the town-wide training?
That's town-wide training.
Okay. We didn't know if that was Town Hall or the Town of Fountain Hills.
And the transfer to Special Revenues in the STS?
The transfer to Special Revenues is the town's match for the grant funds to support the STS program for next year. Any other questions? The next division is Information Technology. IT went from $307,366 to a proposed budget next year of $196,186. That's a reduction of 36.2%. The bulk of this is in the delaying of upgrades to computer equipment and servers. We had had a very competitive replacement schedule with IT equipment. We backed off on that schedule just because we're not in a position to be as aggressive with server replacement. And that's the primary reduction is in those types of costs.
Mary, were there costs in the IT budget previously that are now absorbed across the other departments?
We slowly moved towards things like telecom that used to be included in IT, being moved out of IT and into the Internal Service Fund that's, that's charging all the individual departments.
Okay.
If there are no further questions on that, I'll move to the Public Information Division. What you're seeing in the Public Information Division is the remnants of the programs that will remain, but the Public Information Office has been disbanded. So in the actual final budget document, once the structure has been determined about who these programs will reside in, these programs will move to another department and the Public Information Department will completely disappear from the budget. But these are the remaining programs that haven't been yet reassigned. Any questions?
The, the item for telecom, again, is one of those items that's now spreading across the different departments individually. If there's not a person in that position, would additional telecom costs be moving to other departments? It seems like that would, that might be one that would not continue.
A number of things may happen as a result of this. One of the items in the capital improvement program is a, the start of a new telephone system at Town Hall. And so some of the telecom costs in the budget may actually get reduced as a result of that. Right now, what we're paying for desk sets that we may no longer need. So there is some hope that that might be a cost savings in next year's budget.
Okay. Councilmember Elke.
Mary, would we expect to see then some of these costs eliminated altogether or just shifted to another department such as the legislative meetings? Would we expect the Town Manager then to take on those responsibilities and duties? And certainly with office supplies and publications, you know, what other costs can we expect to be shifted?
The costs remaining in this department would be, are those remaining that we are expecting to shift to another department?
So all of the, the 10,000, but?
And that's why we left it in the budget because we know it is still going to be an expense. We just don't know under which department those expenses will fall. The next division would be Finance. In Finance, we went from a budget of 324,316 to 299,897, which is a reduction of 7.5%. And here again, the primary reductions are across the board reductions in all object codes. Any questions on Finance? In the Economic Development Department, and I don't know if you want to talk about the two components of economic development together, both those in the General Fund and in the Excise Tax Fund, but I'll, I'll talk about both and then we can go from there. In the General Fund, the current budget for economic development is 149,571. It's proposed for next year to be 73,359, which is a reduction of 51%. Last year's cost, because it was a startup program, there were a significant number of startup costs relating to the production of marketing materials and such. So a portion of the reduction here is that those initial startup costs are gone and it's now settling into more the kinds of costs you would see on a year-to-year basis. In the Downtown Development Component, the costs increased primarily as a result of the two capital project costs being transferred to CIP. And I don't know if there are any particular questions about any of those.
Would you mind going over those again, 320? Just to help me understand, there's a sidewalk, is that included in this? Is that a different piece? And the greening and how, and where do the monies come from and where do they end up going?
The two projects that are scheduled is one project that's the Downtown Vision Plan Phase Two Avenue Lakeside for 290,000. And the Downtown Vision Plan Phase Two for 30,000. One, the 30,000 project is the design of the intersection at Saguaro and Avenue of the Fountains to make it consistent with the overall Downtown Vision Plan before the repaving of Saguaro hopefully next year. And the other project is a project that will allow, if a development was to be secured on that property next door, funds that would be available for the town to offer incentives such as the town putting in the sidewalks so that the sidewalks would match the, the rest of the downtown plan.
On the Lakeside, the breakdown there and for the Vision Plan, do you understand what, what elements that could include?
I don't, I know about things like the sidewalks, but maybe Lori can talk a little bit more about what other items might be included in that.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Lori.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. That would include any public infrastructure that we might want to assist with in that project. So it could include sidewalks. It could include perhaps excel or decel lanes if we needed it. It could include things like parking, street parking. It could include curbs and gutters. It could, so it could include a variety of things. It would just depend on the project type and, and what, what all is entailed in that project. So it is, it was in there last year and the year before. We wanted to continue to include it in there as we continue to discuss potential developments on that property with developers.
And were any of the dollars spent last year?
No, they were not.
And so these dollars have come in through the Excise Tax and then go be reimbursed the capital on?
Yes.
CIP fund if those dollars are spent?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Good, thank you.
If there are no other questions about economic and downtown development?
Another question, Councilmember Elke.
Thank you. Mary, it appears that last, last year, we, the salaries and benefits were paid out of obviously the General Fund and the Excise Tax Fund. It seems like this year that a greater portion of the salaries and benefits are actually coming out of the Excise Tax Fund as opposed to the General Fund. Was that decision made because of the lack of funds generally in the General Fund or was there some other reason behind that? And I have a second question as well, but go ahead and answer that first.
The administrative assistant to the Economic Development and Public Information Officer was only charged to the General Fund. With the reduction of that position, only the General Fund component of salaries and benefits went down.
Well, last year, the, the funds that were coming out of the Excise Tax Fund were for the economic developer as well as the administrative assistant. And we have the fund, it's 45,739. And this year, when we just have the Economic Development Administrator, the total amount's 54,714. So again, it's increased.
That's just her salary now that's included in the General Fund. It's not split 50-50. I think it's a 25-75 split.
Has that changed? I guess if it, Councilmember Elke, is it on the Excise Tax, are you looking at last year's of 45?
Yes.
Thousand and then this year in the budget, it shows 54,000 on the Excise. I think that's what we're trying to understand, the 10,000 or 9,000 difference.
Yeah, I think there is, there is a slight allocation difference this year in the salary of the Economic Development Administrator.
One additional question, last year, the total budget for office supplies, certainly I'm not trying to be ticky tack here, but last year, when you had two employees in that department, the office supplies and everything were, it's about 1,300. This year, it's about 4,500 and we have one employee at this time. Is, is there, is there something else going on? Because if it's necessary, absolutely, but is there something else going on that we need to know?
I was going to see if Lori was going to step up and answer on office supplies.
She's coming.
Perhaps there's something else that's included in there that, that wasn't included last year.
Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members and Councilmember Elke, yes, indeed, I have included a variety of other things in that office supplies. And we're going to be beefing up our outreach and so I've included additional items in there that we can do in-house. So for example, if we're going to outreach, we're, we're going to try a variety of different methods for outreach. So for example, if we're going to be sending out mailings, if we're going to be sending out postcards, we can do a lot of that printing in-house. So that would increase our office supplies.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dickey.
I have a question, maybe Councilmember Jay can help. When we, I remember discussing the downtown Excise maybe a couple of years ago and actually talking a little bit about the percentage. Did we ever end up having a, coming up with something?
Meaning the percentage of allocation cost?
Between General Fund versus downtown. Does that ring a bell?
Councilmember Legay. What I recall is we adjusted it to 50% as a function of, of the scope of work in terms of what percentage work was where. With a higher percentage moving to the economic development or the downtown fund in this budget, as you can see from the budget and from our ED administrator's activities, there's a higher percentage of the work that's dedicated to downtown development. So it was always, you know, it was always, it was never an exact science. At one point in time, it was 75-25, but at that time, Kate Zanin was not dedicating 75% of her time to downtown development. So we adjusted it back to 50. Since we've hired Lori, if you look at her activities, there's more activities moving towards downtown development, economic development, SWABAC, so forth and so on. So it's just a matter of job, job function.
Thank you.
Ms. Gary, does that, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, there's a couple items and, and I might, if I might answer Councilmember Elke's question, but with a question, are you referring to in the General Fund where it says office and miscellaneous supplies of 3,482? Is that what you're talking about for a total of?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies. There's, there's a variety of other things. There's additional office supplies included in that, but that also includes copier charges. It also includes postage for mailings and things of that. So it's not, it's not just the addition of additional paper or some postcards that we anticipate purchasing, but it is also included postage for some mailings and a lot of copier charges. And so some of those items that we weren't previously charged are now charged in there. And it says office and it's under the miscellaneous supplies.
Mayor, so that's the ISC that we were talking about earlier? So there's an ISC subsection to that office supply component is what you're saying?
What I'm, what I'm sharing with you is some of that was lumped under office supplies in your report. Yes. And Mayor, if I might tag on to Councilmember Legay's comment, that is absolutely an accurate statement. We shifted a little bit of the salary portion into the Excise Tax Fund, the downtown fund, the economic development fund, whatever we're calling that fund, because a larger portion of my time has been spent doing some downtown activities.
Mayor, Mayor, one more time. Councilmember Elke.
Since you're up there, Ms. Gary, the highway signage this year, I noticed, wasn't in last year's budget. Is that, is that billboards? Is that what that?
No, the, the, excuse me, Ms. Mayor Schlum and Councilmember Elke, the highway signage, which is 11,300, that is for the signage that is anticipated being added to State Route 87 and the 202.
Yeah, they're called wayfinding.
The wayfinding signage, yes.
Thank you.
Any other items on economic development? Councilmember Hanson.
Mayor, over the years, there's been discussions about GPEC and how much of a benefit they are to the town. And I know at some point it was questioned whether we were really getting a lot of benefit from it. Could you speak to that or about what we, do we really feel it's worth the 10,000?
That's a harder one to quantify due to the size of our community. It is, and I'll ask staff to give feedback as well, but I'll take the stab at and fill me in, fill in where I may have dropped some items that might be considered of value. Greater Phoenix Economic Council is obviously a regional cooperative group of municipal, private, a quasi-organization put together to bring largely to bring new companies to the Greater Phoenix area. And our dues go to membership in that organization. Our dues, I think, to the municipalities has gone down fortunately and has gone up for the, for the private industries, largely due to the economic downturn and the sensitivity they've had to cities and towns. The, the group has a large staff down in Phoenix and they, for the most part, do outreach to the communities to, around the world, in fact, to bring companies to Arizona. Other things that they do are to bolster the image of Arizona. When it takes a hit for one thing or another, they try to make sure that folks understand the value and the, and the benefits of, of living and more importantly, the attraction of employees, companies here and the employees that serve those companies that might move to Arizona, they want those companies to understand what the benefits of the employees, our schools and so on and so forth. So they try to, to illustrate those things. It's, it's a membership that I think is not inexpensive, but I think it's an important organization to regionally be involved in. I'm not sure, I'm not aware of any communities nearby that are, that might be our size or larger that are not members of GPEC, probably for the same reasons. The organization has, has had contact with our staff and with myself. As far as what have they brought to us lately, I'd have to ask Lori to see if there's any feedback that Lori might have directly as far as companies that have moved here, like the Tourism Bureau to some extent that we fund. Some things are difficult to measure, particularly branding and things along those lines about, you know, how much, what's the return on the investment. But it seems like a well-run organization that does an important function and for us to be involved as a regional player, I would suggest we continue it. Lori, you want to, Lori was on the board for quite a while before I asked to take that seat. So Lori, do you have any additional feedback on?
I, I do and certainly I would concur with your assessment, Mayor, of GPEC. But they, they also provide us a lot of visibility and I'll share with you a little bit about the leads, but I'd like to, to share with you also that they provide us with additional services that we could not pay for, for 10,000. We get CoStar, which is a, a program that allows us to search available properties in the Town of Fountain Hills. I have found that invaluable when I'm talking with clients that I can log right on there and I can look up the available spaces and it goes into office space and retail space and industrial space and flex space that is available in Fountain Hills and I can quickly identify those, call up the real estate person who has that listed and quickly be able to put together some information. So that's one thing that they provide us that is concrete, that we are able to put our arms around. They provide us with a lot of other expertise on research that we couldn't do on our own without costing us a lot of money. They have two websites that Fountain Hills is on in addition to the other communities. One is called Opportunity Greater Phoenix. And as And as we shoot out information on our community, information on Fountain Hills, the good things that are happening here, they are on our contact list, and that gets prominently put up on that website, and they get hundreds of thousands of hits on that on a year. They also have a more functional, that's more of a PR website, they also have a more functional website that we are also on. And so, as clients come in and look for communities in the Greater Phoenix area, for example, we are on there, and they can look at our community profile, they can look at the things that are happening in our community, they can look at the types of businesses that are in our community, and they can also look at the available properties that are on our community. So, I think that alone, we could not duplicate for $10,000. It would cost a lot more money to do that. In addition, they provide us with leads. As they go out, they go out on marketing trips, they go out, they do a lot of calls to businesses. Again, we don't have the staff or the budget to do that. We are included in all that marketing and the PR for that. We receive leads to that, and as we have leads that we are able, businesses that we are able to host in our community, I have responded to those leads. And so, there are some that are what I would call in the queue, that are prospects, not yet clients, but prospects, because here, there's a business looking, here's the parameter of the business, we've thrown our hat in the ring, we put together a client or prospect package, and so I continue to follow up on those. So, for the services, and there's others that I've not mentioned, for $10,000, we could not do that. We don't have the staff or the resources or the expertise with one person on staff to do that. So, I hope that is, that's helpful information. And also, I am happy to ask GPEC, the President and CEO Barry Broom, to come in to share other information with you. He has actually asked me if the council would be open to doing that, and I'm, if the council is, I'm happy to, I'm happy to ask him to come in.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, that's very helpful, because in the past, right around budget time, like Ioannamorphosis would come out and kind of give the council an update on what their activities were. So, you know, you knew what you were getting for the membership, and that was helpful. So, I mean, just like the things that you were reporting on, it's good information.
That would be great to have them come out and give us an update, but they do it far better than I, for sure. But I did mention a couple of things that, on a regional basis, that they've been working on very hard, is the, making sure Luke wins the F-35 contract to get the latest and greatest replacement of the F-16, and the value regionally to Luke Air Force Base Dean put would be, is tremendous even to somebody in Fountain Hills. And then, some trips that they've been making and efforts they've been placing to make sure the capital markets are more comfortable with Arizona as an investment, they've been putting a lot of efforts in that. I think it's hard to tell what return on investment that is, but those are some of the things. But I think overarching, they're just looking to bring jobs to Arizona. I know this last legislative session, they were working quite closely and looked upon for advice from the legislature on the jobs bill that was, that was working its way through. So, I know that was another element of their attention, but I think that'd be great to have them come out. They certainly be invited, but I know, Councilmember Dickey, you had something else to add?
Yes, Mayor, basically what you said, I know that we were talking about what you can, how you can assess the value of some things, but obviously, there's value in being at the table and networking with this group and Barry Broom, and not this session, but last session, right when it was wrapping up, and we had a real big energy jobs bill going, and almost you could turn the horizon on any time and see him and Mike Bidwell, I think, on there. It's all about job creation, and also due to the fact that now that we don't have, no disrespect, we don't have a legislative person anymore, we soon will, but basically, they are there, they are very representative, they're very active, and they are all about municipality. So, I know that we're looking line by line and really trying to see what we can do without, but at this point, I would, I would really say that we would get more than our money for it by staying members of GPEC.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, more information would be great, because I can't explain it very well, but generally, it's a great regional organization that gets businesses, municipalities, and other groups at the same table to work on things to leverage the strengths each one can bring, and have good communication. But also, the, Michael Bidwell, as the Chair, is just doing a tremendous job. He's, we're real fortunate to have him, and of course, Barry Broom is on the staff, leading the staff, is, I think, doing a good job as well.
I would be happy to extend that invitation, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Anything else on, oh, Councilmember Hanson.
Mayor, I think maybe at the last meeting, we talked about the possibility of showing maybe in parentheses or something, the combined amounts of the two. That would be pretty, that would be very helpful.
In the updated document, you're going to see a general fund summary, an excise tax summary, and then a combined summary.
That would be great. Because, you know, we look at things like conferences and meetings, and, you know, cumulatively, they add up to $18,000 in professional affiliations, and that seems to be higher than some of the other departments and for a one-person department. And I didn't know if we could maybe, you know, look at those a little more closely and pinpoint the ones that are going to give the, the community the biggest bang for the buck, that would have the most impact. It just seems like that was a little bit on the high side.
Typically, most of the expenses in economic development are just allocated between the two funds, so it's not that the general fund represents membership in one organization and the excise tax in another. It tends to be a 50-50 split between the two funds for the same organization.
So, Mayor, what's your best advice on helping council members get comfortable with the conference, trade shows, meetings, memberships, publications? Those seem to be the line items, some larger dollar amounts.
Not being the expert on the economic development organizations, I'd call Lori back up.
Or Councilmember Hanson, is that, is there some other way you think you'd like to see it, or do you just want to speak to those items?
Well, another thing that might be helpful, and actually, I was going to bring this up in some of the previous ones, when there are a series of items, like in this one, where there's AAEED, IEDC, ICMA, and the different memberships, maybe have those just, you know, in parentheses, itemized out, so there's an idea of what they are. Like if there's multiple items in one line, and it's all clumped under one number, just a little more detail on that would be helpful.
And to speak to those, do you want those, would we speak to each of those items? As far as, are you looking for council to get comfortable with the value of each organization or the investment in each item? Or just a break?
Probably not, probably just, a breakdown and, yeah, maybe just more information.
Yeah, broken out a little bit more.
Because, I mean, that would have to be left to Lori to know which one, you know, which of these are the most, of most benefit. I mean, that's her area.
Good. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, just wanted to offer that we, we're going to find that in every division that we go into, so I don't know if that's something you want to make across the board, but we have engineering groups, just strings of letters that I don't know what they are either, and if we're going to, you know, maybe we can reevaluate all of these things at some point, because it's obviously that everybody has memberships and everything, from fire safety to public safety to engineering and building, and, I mean, there's all kinds of organizations and dues and memberships that we have here. So, I just offer that. If, you know, if we're going to do it, we could do it everywhere.
Do you have any, based on what you've heard, Lori, do you have anything you want to share?
Under the dues and subscription area, the dollar amount that Councilmember Hanson was questioning, over $10,000 of that is the GPEC dues. So, that's under the dues and subscriptions. And the membership portions of that are very minimal dollar amount, I think it's about $600. But the major portion that's in that particular category are what I call resources that we, that we need. For example, we subscribe to a service called Claritas, and that helps us with demographics. And it is, and I'm going from memory here, I can look it up, but I think it's well over $1,000 for that particular subscription to the Claritas. That helps us with the demographics. So, for example, we can do ring demographics, we can do drive time demographics, we can figure out our trade area demographics, and that, it's updated on a, twice a year, so we will have fresh information on our market. So, as we are talking to people, we can say, as I had mentioned at one particular point in time, the average commute time in Maricopa County, one way to work is approximately 29 minutes. So, then we can say in approximately 29-minute drive time, what is our labor pool, for example? And so, as we talk with clients, or we talk with retailers, we talk with, you know, people who need office space, we can then articulate that in real time, instantaneously, and we can get out prospect packages very quickly. So, for example, that's one of the items, it's a large-ticket item in that particular category. Also, we, in that particular category, we have a retail tenant directory. They no longer make that retail tenant directory in a hard copy, you know, it's about this thick, and so it's an online directory now, and that's about $1,500. So, as we are out talking to retailers, and we're looking at very specific retailers to target that will fit our market, now we can go online and put those specifications in, so it's a much easier and quicker way of identifying targets for our market. So, it does seem like a large budget line item, again, over 10,000, a little bit over 10,000 is GPEC dues. The majority of that is what I would call directories or report subscriptions of that nature, that will be able to help us do our job much quicker and easier.
Well, actually, the GPEC was its own line item.
Yeah, I think what you, what you're looking at, what we're looking at, is a little bit different.
Yeah, I was talking about the $18,000 that represents memberships, publications, conferences, and meetings.
And the GPEC should be in that line item also.
It's its own line item.
Are you looking?
I'm on 205.
Yes, and that is in that particular, and Mayor, you might want to explain, explain this also, is that where it says GPEC dues, GPEC membership dues, and AAEED, IEDC, those sort of dues. In the municipal report, it's all under dues and subscriptions, so.
For ours, it's all under services and supplies.
Okay, well, then we'll hammer that out and clarify that.
And Councilmember Hanson, to make sure we, give us the tools we need to do best, is what you're requesting would be helpful, is to break that, break out the AAEED separately, just each of those items.
Yeah, and I think when Mary said too, that they're going to show one that combines the general fund and the economic development fund.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
For this evening, what I can quote is the AAEED membership is $250. The IECDC membership is $345.
That's okay, Mayor, you can put that together.
If there are no other questions on economic development, we can move on to legal. The legal budget this year is $360,804. For next year, we're proposing $314,060.
Mayor, what was it last year, I'm sorry? Okay.
So, we're looking there at a 13% reduction. The contract for the Town Prosecutor is set, so there's no change in that. The other items that are included in legal are the Public Defender, and the Public Defender costs are guesstimates, because we don't know how often a public defender's services will be needed for the coming year, so we're estimating that it would be equal to the services this fiscal year. The primary reduction in costs in that department are the controllable hourly costs of our town attorney. And so, the bulk, if not all, of the reduction is in reduction in town attorney service hours.
Councilmember Elke.
Just one additional line item that I see that we didn't have last year, and I kind of suspect where it is, but the $1,500 in supplies, and based on the numbers, I believe that's attributed to town attorney and outside counsel in that block. Is that because now our staff are doing more work in-house, making copies and relying less on the town attorney and outside counsel? Or is that $1,500 for something else for the outside counsel in the town attorney?
$1,500 is typically for law books, for in-house counsel.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, that's the set of West books that are in the town attorney's office. We keep a full updated set, and that's about the annual subscription rate.
We didn't have this cost last year, the $1,500, is it a new set of law books that we're purchasing?
It was just buried into the cost of the town attorney.
Okay, so we're paying for the research law books now? Is that my understanding?
We always have.
Wasn't that just allocated in a different line item?
It was just included in the total cost of the town attorney. It wasn't broken out, so that his billable hours were in one category, and his supplies were in another.
Okay, because this wasn't a cost last year, that's why I wanted to figure out where that additional $1,500 was in there. It may have been incorporated somewhere else in the cost. Okay, thank you.
Was it about $1,500 last year, do you recall?
It was about the same amount.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the set of Arizona revised statutes that's in the office right now is actually a set that Paul Norden bought, because Paul wanted to have an updated set of ARS in his office the whole time. So, it's been updated annually ever since, and the original books were purchased.
Mayor, I may, I propose maybe, I mean, that most of this stuff is online, as far as all the research, I mean, the subscriptions to Westlaw, and I'm sure the town attorney has that through his, through his office, the subscription. I don't know if we necessarily need our own law books here, if they're being updated at a cost of $1,500 a year.
Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Elke. Mayor, has that been considered, or Andrew, has that been considered? Is this just something we've been doing that we maybe don't need to continue doing?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we can certainly do a lot of the research online that is contained in the statutes. The current versions of the statutes that are in there are annotated versions, which the key provisions there that are helpful are that they're annotated, and they have case law that you can reference over and quickly find what we're looking for. The online research is available, but it's at a cost. You know, our Westlaw contract is not free, and each time that I access Westlaw to get an annotated statute, it's a chargeful cost. And we've decided, in my firm personally, that it hasn't been cost beneficial for us to go entirely away from the sets, the full sets that we have, one of here in Town Hall. I believe actually, there might be another set that the town supports in the court as well, so, you know, we're certainly open to whatever suggestions that you have. It is useful for that resource to be out here. We maintain multiple sets in my office, of course. We have Westlaw research, we also have, in each attorney's office, a set of the softbound statutes, so that, you know, most of the cost of this kind of research material is borne in our hourly rate, you know, the lion's share is.
Okay, Councilmember Elke.
Mayor, if the law books are essentially just sitting up here, I'm not sure how much research the town attorney does here in our building. I know that Mr. McGuire has an office here, but I would imagine most of his work probably takes place at his firm in Phoenix. If nobody's looking at the books, if they're just gathering dust, and it's something that we can take advantage of, if it's included in the cost of our expense with the town attorney, I would propose that perhaps we remove that expense. I don't know, perhaps there's council members, and perhaps you, Mayor, up there flipping through the books, or the staff aren't, if the staff are using it, sure.
Right.
But if it's not being used, I would propose that we eliminate that cost.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, we had those, well, basically, we had them just because it was about environmental, but we, a lot of people used them. They were available to be used. Didn't you just say, excuse me, Mayor, Andrew, that they, we also maintain a set for the, for the court? Is that what you just said?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I know Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I know that there is a West Law bill that floats around typically that ends up, one of it's written to the court and one of it's written for upstairs. So I think there are two sets in Town Hall. And to answer the question directly, they are used. And I, you know, call this old-fashioned, but flipping through statutes to be able to quickly find what you're looking for is the first place that we look. Whenever we're on-site, that's the resource we use. And I want to be very clear that West Law resources are not included in the bill. Those are all additional charter resources. So if I'm on-site and need to use an annotated version of the statute, that's the way I'm going to have to go. Or if it's the council's direction, be happy to go down and bother the judge in his office to use his set. I mean, that's fine with me as well.
Councilmember Dickie?
Mayor, and I've often asked questions that were looked up, and then if you had it online, you'd end up probably printing it, and then you'd have that, and then you'd do something with it, and then next time you needed it. Let me just put it this way, I wasn't an attorney where I worked, but I looked at the books a lot. So if it's here, I would say that we should keep it here, unless it's really not being used at all, but I'm not convinced that it's not being used. It's $1,500 to get all of the changes that happened from the last session, and so it's very timely and very useful.
See, obviously, with each department and budget, and particularly when positions are eliminated, and that we really are going to be looking for any reductions we can that makes sense. So I think I would imagine that that's the line that Councilmember Elke is approaching this as well, is if there's a smarter way to do this, that's less expensive, especially at this time, then let's take it. So is there, there's a chance, there could be some sharing going on here, that would still be workable and not net us out of the higher costs?
Mr. Mayor, like I said, I'm perfectly comfortable if the town wants to let this set lapse, and then have the current set of A R S only reside in the court, and any updates need to be checked down in Ted's office, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that the understanding here is not that this is unused material.
Right.
And just to be ultra-clear that this is a resource that could lead to a cost that we don't, we can't anticipate until we know when those things come up, when I'm off-site, when I'm on in Fountain Hills, rather than in my office, and able to use my own set.
Councilmember Dickie?
Mayor, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I know I've had personnel questioned several times, and one very recently that had just gotten passed, but I did get help from staff, or so. Again, unless you want staff members having to go down and look things up and then make copies of them, or, and I know we had a big rule that we couldn't take the books out of the, out of where they were, so I always had to use them and sit there. So, again, I mean, I think we ought to keep it up to date.
Yeah, so I think we could, we want it to make sense, I think. So if there's ways to share that you want to perhaps bring back at our next meeting, and we'll likely adopt a budget. If there's an adjustment there that you can speak to that would make sense for everyone, then maybe that's the way to go. Does that sound appropriate, Councilmember Elke? Did you go through all the items in legal yet?
Would be the town attorney, outside counsel, public defender, town prosecutor, and then the law book subscription.
And the outside counsel member, that's also dependent upon the need, correct?
The need.
So hopefully that can be kept at a close to a zero. Good target, is that a bad target number? Come.
Mr. Mayor, it would be a pleasure if we had the zero need for specialized outside counsel services of any kind in the next fiscal year.
And no public defender either? Those are numbers that are just budgeted as you state a guesstimate? Okay, thank you. Any other questions on legal?
The next division would be operating support, and what you're seeing in operating support is just the town contingency reserve. It's a little higher than we've had it in past years, and that's specifically because of the concerns about shared revenues.
Okay, and this is an expenditure? And can you explain how it would, how things would flow if this contingency would be needed?
The contingency would typically come about if there were a project that the council would like the town to take on, or if the manager had a project that we would like to pursue. The contingency is there to allow us to pursue those items. Typically, they're used in emergency circumstances where something unforeseen arises, and those funds would be available to deal with it.
Any questions on that item? Thank you.
Moving on to the Development Services Department, the first division.
Councilmember Hanson?
Just a quick question, Mary, on the next pages, starting on 108, the program budgets. I know this is a different way of showing different areas in the budget. Can you just briefly explain what it does represent? I mean, like, under strategic planning, we're showing $18,533 for the strategic plan update?
Actual program breakdowns on page 108 and 109.
With the program budget, what we've tried to do is, what you'll find in the performance measures section, is to try to break each division into its component services. And so each program represents one of the services within a division. The strategic planning program is really geared toward the ongoing update of the strategic plan. And so it has, you know, a five-year cycle, and also an annual update cycle. And so what you're seeing here is all of the costs associated with that program, which would be staffing costs plus actual material costs involved in updating of the strategic plan.
So even though it just was updated and we approved it, we'll be expending funds every year to keep it going?
To keep it updated every year?
Will this also include staff time at SPAC meetings, or is this a separate item?
No, it is the total cost of the program. So it includes staff time, all of the direct costs related to the program. So if we were to continue to print strategic plan brochures, the costs of the printing of those brochures would be included in that program's cost. So it's all costs related to that program.
Okay, then, in following on that line, these are breakdowns by program cost?
Correct. We're hoping as we develop the program budget concept, what you will come to see next year would be department-based object codes, and then division-based with object codes, and then program-based with object codes. And so as we progress with the, with the program budget, you will continue to see more and more detail at each level. And this is our next step of bringing in the program budget costs.
So then, like on page 110, just quickly following up on that, the business attraction and recruitment, and the business retention, so that $73,000 represents a piece of the economic development budget specifically for that purpose?
That is correct.
Okay.
But it shows within administration?
That's the.
The divisions in the administration budget.
Moving on to Development Services, the first division there is engineering. Engineering in this year's budget was $791,242. In next year's budget, we are planning for $394,538, which is a reduction of 50.1%. The bulk of the reduction is the movement of the traffic management program and the median maintenance program from the general fund to the streets or HERF fund. Are there any questions about engineering?
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. On page 117, we've got the thing again about things decreasing or increasing, and just a couple of them really stand out. And it might be because of the consolidation, but there's like a $40,000 reduction in electricity, and a $70,000 reduction in water and sewer. So I figured something must have gotten moved out to, because I'm sure the utilities aren't going to be that generous with us.
The bulk of that is in median maintenance, which was moved to the HERF fund.
Okay.
Do you know what dollar amount that was, that was moved to HERF? Was it the?
It's all of it.
So basically, the difference from the $791 to the $394?
In facilities maintenance, the current year budget is $580,957, and the proposed budget is $494,122, which is a reduction of 14.9%. Here again, the bulk of the reduction in costs have been in preventive maintenance programs that the town has typically become involved in. Are there any questions about facilities maintenance?
And when you mention preventive, these are on our town-owned facilities, this isn't the washers and maintenance?
The largest component of our preventive maintenance, and I'll ask Stretch to come up and speak to it if you have more detail, is typically in areas like the HVAC system. That's probably one of the most significant costs that are involved in any of our facilities.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to understand that a little bit more, if Mr. Kowakas is available. Welcome, Stretch, how are you?
Thank you. Mayor, from council people. The reduction in maintenance is we're going to cut back changing out air filters by one time a year, which will put a little bit of stress on the air conditioning system, but it will, will make it last, will make it work. Air filters are quite expensive. Fan belts, of course, we'll have to maintain to keep everything up and running. We will do our best to keep the air conditioning system going, to a point where we'll not have any breakdowns. Anything else I can add for you?
Great, no, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you. Anything else on facilities from council? Councilmember Hanson?
If I may, I might be able, I've heard a recent rumor that the Kiwanis Building was going to be up for sale, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to dispel that.
Ms. Martin, do you know about this?
I have not even heard the rumor.
I was quite surprised.
I think none of our facilities are up for sale yet.
Town manager?
I know of no sale that we're holding, or any proposal to sell town facilities.
We might be auctioning off an old vehicle or two, but no buildings yet.
Took care of that one.
Thank you. Yeah, the state, the state, the, and they're leasing back.
The next item on page 122 is the streets department, which isn't funded out of the general fund, but the HERF fund.
And what was, do you know what last year's?
This is a difficult one, because of the transfer of so many programs to the streets department, their budget has increased dramatically because of the transfer of things like median maintenance, traffic maintenance, and such to the HERF fund.
Do you know what we're likely going to be saving on median maintenance reductions? Just that item itself, offhand?
I'm going to call Ken Kurth up and see if he can address that for you.
Good evening, Mr. Kurth, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor. We, our contract bid opening, we will probably go from, we have budgeted $158, median maintenance will probably be around 100, because we're down to two, two people on the, on the medians.
Is this a reduction in the scope of, or the?
Yeah.
Okay. The amount?
And then, and it's a reduction in the amount per hour as well.
Okay. Is that a, these are median maintenance contracts, so we'll be, we'll be saying in our new bids, we're looking for you to do less work?
Less man-hours.
Less man-hours?
Yes.
What was that?
We went from a high of six to, we have two on the medians now.
Okay, and that covers all the medians throughout town, towns, aides?
Right-of-ways.
Right-of-ways, okay.
Or complex here.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kurth while he's up? Councilmember Elke?
All right. Just a quick question for you, I'm just looking at the expenditures from last year. Water and garbage services last year was $11,415, and then water this year is $61,501. And then we have, I think it's, the waste perhaps is under a different heading now. Is it under refuse recycling now? Is that, is that accurate, Ms. Martin? Yes?
Correct.
The water, why the significant jump in the water this year? Is there something going on?
Medians.
Medians?
Took from public works. The median water is about 50, 52,000.
I see. So moved from public works to the streets?
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Kurth.
Moving on, the next item is planning and zoning. Now I just have to find my sheet. Did you pick up my sheet?
Is it within our binder, Mary?
It's in the prior presentation where I talked about the reductions from departments in departments, so I'm going to have to wing it now. The planning and zoning department had significant reductions primarily due to reductions in staffing. And overall reductions in all line items, but the most significant reductions were in salary and benefits.
Got any questions from anyone on P and Z? I think on these, yeah, just to, would it be helpful on the dues to just break those out as well?
I know we don't have it in front of you, don't worry about it. That's not bad. We could on the next round of paperwork provide more detail on dues for the various memberships. If, nothing more? The next division is building safety. Here again, significant reductions, most of which occurred in the area of salaries and benefits. And therefore proportionally, training and all of the other line items are significantly reduced as a result. If no questions there, I'll move on to code enforcement. As I mentioned in the earlier report, we're down to the point where we do only, no proactive code enforcement because of reductions in staff in that area. So here again, what you're seeing is reductions to salaries and benefits, and then the proportional reduction in all the other line items as a result of that.
And when you mentioned code enforcement, we do, still do building inspections and things related to construction and regulatory areas. This is more for aesthetics and compliance of subdivision ordinances and. This is more for aesthetics and compliance of subdivision ordinances and the like.
And we still respond to all complaints. It's just we, in the past, have had the luxury of going out and looking for infractions of our codes, and now we basically respond to complaints.
Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. The only one I can think of right now that would be a little bit more concerning is the West Nile and the green pools and that kind of stuff. So particularly with if there are a lot of houses for sale and things like that. So I don't know the answer. I just, it just does, you know, it's a little bit different than if somebody, you know, parked on their gravel one night or something like that.
Well, then the county did shift some of the costs to the towns, if I recall. Is that, would that be within this budget?
I was going to say that we've taken a different approach to things like the pool abatement issue. And if you'd like, I can have Bob come up and maybe talk a little about the change in the process that we're using.
That'd be good.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Yeah, the code enforcement, actually, the West Nile and the green pools and things like that are going to be mainly covered by the county now. We've shifted that responsibility or trying to back to them. Whenever we have to do it, it's more or less an unfunded mandate, so we do have to have a little money in there for it.
I thought we had had an update, maybe when they were here talking about air quality, that they were shifting, some of the costs were coming to the town, so we're able to push back?
A little bit.
So when we get a, when there's a green pool complaint or someone gives a heads-up, where does that go?
Well, right now, well, we have in the past drained them if they were an immediate problem. But right now, we're trying to work with the county to get them to actually come out and treat them with the fish now. So we're trying to take the expense off the town and put it back into the county.
Okay.
Working a little bit.
Are, just generally with foreclosures and such, are we seeing less problems or...
It's pretty steady. It's pretty steady. Yeah, the foreclosures are still a problem.
Okay. All right, councilman. Any questions? Thanks, Bob.
The next division would be mapping and graphics. Again, here the significant cost reductions have come through a reduction in staffing. We went from a two-person department basically to a one-person department. And the budget is significantly reduced by that.
Mayor, if I could, on office supplies, these are expenses when someone orders something, a citizen, and they have to pay for it. Does that, is that reflected in here, or where would that be reflected?
On the revenue side, the sale of maps and things of that sort typically reflect the revenues being generated by the GIS department.
Okay, but the cost for generating that map would be reflected here, not the net cost after revenue?
Yes, the total cost would be reflected here.
You're not expecting that we're making a great deal of money on printing maps, but... The GIS updates, do you, is that an annual fee, or is that something we're required to do?
The GIS updates are typically updates to the GIS system. And we program each year for it, but on some years, we haven't actually done an update. It just depends on what updates are available during the course of the year.
Okay.
Moving on to the Community Services Department. On page 135 is recreation. Recreation has made significant reductions both in staffing and in programming. In the past, we've had staff to support a lot of the evening community service projects for things like the Little League. All of that community support is reduced in this budget and, for the most part, eliminated. We've also had reductions in some of the town-sponsored events, such as concerts in the park. And I know the staff in the Recreation Department is doing their best to look for sponsors of one sort or another so that we can find a way to maintain those programs for the community.
I wanted to point out one thing I've, and this Recreation, obviously, they'd point out a lot of in their performance measures, some of the results from the prior year. I think that's helpful. I enjoy looking back at that and seeing what they've been up to and then also their objectives for the next year, having them spelt out pretty extensively. I know with so many events and supporting so many different efforts, there's a lot that could be included in Recreation, but it's, just in general, it's nice to see in their budget. The, with concerts in the park and some of those cutbacks, where would we, where's the best time to make sure we understand as councilmembers what we're reducing? I know we had an overview of it here. Would it be on this page here, page 135? Those savings are now not included in the costs?
That is correct.
And do we have some feedback from staff as to what we think the impact on those events might be?
At this point, I'd bring Mark. Do you want to speak to it?
Mayor Schlum and members of the council. I'll just make some brief comments, and then if there's specifics, I can certainly turn it over to Brian. I think as we went through the budget process, and the budget was largely put together by Brian, we were trying to focus on those activities, as you had mentioned earlier, that we felt like we could make that transition from the town actually taking the lead on the projects to acting more facilitators. So I think Brian coined that phrase. Activities like the Oktoberfest, you know, it's, we've been participating now for a couple of years. It was Brian's opinion and after discussions with them that they were in a position to not move forward with that activity. We'll still provide some staff support, but not to the extent with out-of-pocket costs that we had in the past, for instance. So that's kind of indicative of what we're trying to transition to now. You mentioned the Concerts in the Park series. Again, actively seeking sponsors to help us fund those activities. And as you mentioned earlier, through the local Sears stores, we were able to solicit and get a $5,000 grant, which magically covers completely the cost of not only staff, but also the hard costs of putting those kind of events on it. So we're going to try to do as much of that as we can and facilitate those activities to the extent that we can. And then, in some cases, the extravagance and some others, continue to take the lead on those activities.
Thank you.
But that, if you have specifics, I can certainly turn it over to Brian.
We'll see if council has more questions on that. Thank you, Mark. Councilmember Hanson, would you share just a couple of seconds of what that Sears experience was all about and the benefits to the town? Would you mind?
Craftsman Across America with Lucas and Cash. It was quite the event. And our town manager and his lovely wife performed for us, which was, the organizers liked it so well, Brian said that we should do this at some of our other stops, find some local talent and do that. But it's great. Derek from our Sears hometown store wrote an essay, and he competed for them to stop in Fountain Hills, because they're only stopping at, Brian, 24 cities across the country, going from Santa Monica to New York. And we were want, we were chosen because of his essay. And along with it came $5,000, which we're going to work on somehow coming up with credit for the season in next spring and make it the Craftsman or the Sears hometown store, Concerts in the Park. And we even jokingly asked the writer of The Mower, who was just a very fun individual, that maybe he would want to come back next spring and kick off the concert series. So that was, that was great. And he's keeping a blog and with pictures and telling about his adventures. So as he goes on and more people are watching the blog, you know, as he's coming to a city near them, they're going to hear about Fountain Hills. So we're going to get quite a bit of publicity out of it.
That's cool.
Craftsman put us on the map.
Good deal. That's awesome.
They could. The last thing they ended up doing was they wanted a volunteer activity. So there were a lot of people from their corporate offices that came along too. So here's where people that were dressed in business attire that were out there, and we had them pulling weeds and using oars and rakes and the rest of that stuff. And so if you drive by, you'll happen to notice that there was a section along your pump house wall that because of the spring rains had gotten some pretty tall weeds in there. So rather than have our staff or contractor go in there and clean it up, they were able to do that whole piece in about an hour, which, frankly, with the temperatures, was about as much time as I and they wanted to spend outdoors. That was another benefit. You can't put a price tag on that, but it was a very visual thing that added a lot to the project, so.
And Barb was there from the paper and took a lot of pictures.
Took a lot of pictures. They also took a lot of pictures.
And she do have pictures of Mark.
Yes, getting dirty.
Weeding, yes. We approve.
Very good. So Mark did, and thanks, Councilmember Hanson, for covering that, Vice Mayor, covering that.
It was fun.
Yeah, cool. I always like to see Rick and Amy play their instruments. They're awesome. But would you speak to facilitation? And I think generally, we're looking to, as a town, help people to go do events and get out of their way and help them to make things happen, rather than us just spending dollars on lighting and quarter johns and those types of things. So we're looking for more folks or organizations to come forward, and we'll facilitate or help them through the hoops that they need to follow. And we've limited the hoops on permitting and those types of things for organizations and efforts that would benefit the community at large.
Yes, one of the goals that Brian is working on this year is to try to streamline the approval process for events. And as well as, we're in a position through Brian again to steer people in the right direction. Here's a vendor, here's the prices, because we, through Brian's vision, have been doing it for such a long time. So we can tell them who to contact and what the prices are for things that we used to supply in the past.
Good. Any, any other questions from council on recreation? All right, thank you, Mark.
You bet. Thank you.
The next division would be the Community Center. Their budget last year was 697,447. In the proposed budget, it's 589,860, which is a reduction of 15.4%. A portion of the reduction is coming from, again, staff reductions. The Community Center has been delaying the replacement of audio equipment in the Community Center and other equipment like tables and chairs for quite some time. This year in the budget, for the first time, we've established an equipment replacement program. And so the Community Center is going to be taking small steps towards replacing that equipment in this year's budget. And that isn't reflected in their budget. It's reflected in the Internal Service Fund for Equipment Replacement. Any questions on the Community Center?
Councilmember Hanson?
Their advertising budget, and I, a member had told me this, it's quite low, at about $1,700. And I think we might be, you know, missing something here by not having a little bit more funding for advertising to promote that building. Maybe some of the downtown money could be, because it really, you know, the more we can attract people to the Community Center, you know, it helps to benefit the downtown as well. So maybe a little funding from that area might be possible.
One of the things that we did eliminate in this year's budget is typically the Recreation Department and the Community Center participated in bridal shows, because we tend to draw a significant number of rentals from those kinds of shows. And so that might be one of the kinds of advertising programs we could look to add back in. Any other questions on Community Center? The next division is Senior Services. The Senior Services budget last year was 270,177. And the proposed budget is 232,280, which is a reduction of 14%. There are no reductions in staffing in the Senior Services area, so the reductions came primarily from things like the discontinuation of trips, because the cost of the trips were programmed into their budget in the past, and the discontinuation of programs requiring paid instructors.
I have a question. On staffing, we've had a position that's not been, a part-time position, I believe, that's not been refilled. Is that cost for that position being filled included in this next fiscal year?
Yes, it is. The position that's currently unfilled has remained in the budget. So the costs for that position are in the seniors' budget.
Okay. And can you speak to the trips? What, what type of costs were those, and are they, are there still some in here?
The entire trips program that the town used to sponsor have been eliminated from the budget. And I know that the Senior Services staff is trying to work with local travel agents to encourage them to package the kind of tours that the seniors are interested in taking.
Town-sponsored, so the, most of the cost was underwritten by the town for those trips?
In, in the current fiscal year and prior to that, the town subsidized all of the trips.
All the, okay. So trips might still occur, it just needs to be packaged differently in the town. Currently, it doesn't have budget in it?
We, we're planning in next year's budget not to provide any town-sponsored trips at all. The trips would be sponsored by local travel agents.
Okay. Councilmember Loggia?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, Kelly, could you address that? Because it, it sounds like trips are completely going away. And I know Kelly's been working with, anyhow, could you just address that first?
Are we becoming more of a facilitator of...
Yes, Mayor, council. The funds are going away for staff to facilitate and put together the trips. But we are working with a variety of different travel agencies and companies so that our members in the community will have trips available. We're working with Fountain View Village. They offer pretty much the same trips that we did, so I'm excited about that. Arizona Trails Travel is a local travel agency, so we've spoken with them. Free Spirit Vacation offers larger trips, they're more with the larger buses outside of Maricopa County, and we're working with them. And then a new company, TJ's Travel, they offer trips for seniors and boomers through a lot of other senior centers, and we met with them. And they're going to organize trips for our members. And we will also add a program called the Armchair Travelog. And this will be a monthly program where members can come, those that like to travel, and give suggestions to TJ's Travel, and then they'll put those trips together for them. So I'm very confident that we will have trip options, but just packaged a little differently.
Good explanation. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, any other questions in the Senior Services section?
We're now moving into the parks area, and the first park program is Fountain Park. As I mentioned earlier, the budget includes the return of the fountain to a full 15 minutes on the hour runtime. But it does include a significant decrease in the dollars spent for overall park maintenance. I won't get into the details. If the council would like the details, I'll ask Dawn to come up and explain all of the things. I know nothing about gardening.
All right. So from the 384,000 this year, the reduction to get to that number is largely through preventative maintenance?
Well, the change in park operations, to be honest, is point, a reduction of 0.4%. The adding back of the runtime of the fountain, pretty much eliminating the savings that we were expecting in the park.
And that's the electricity. And that's the electricity line item? $147,000. All right, any question? I want to comment on the park. I think it's, I hear a lot of folks come up to me telling me how awesome it looks. So you, Dawn, and the staff there are doing a tremendous job of beautifying that, you know, our centerpiece. So kudos and appreciate you doing all you can to save money and deliver a great product like you're doing now.
Mayor and council, yeah. Thanks for the compliments. We are trying to save as much as we can with the operations over there. We, as Mary said, have made some reductions in the maintenance of the facility, not so much at Fountain Park, but at the other park facilities. We've also done it there. We've also just received back the bids on the annual landscape contract, and the numbers came in pretty good. So we're expecting to be about where we were at last year, or maybe a little bit less in some of the operations there, or some of the maintenance there. On the fountain itself, the fountain jet, the increases due to SRPs, I think there's a increase on their charges there. And we anticipate that we may have to run the fountain a little bit more during the summer months as we always do to augment the lake water quality during the summer months. So that's part of the reason for the additional costs and the, or the increase in the cost with electricity for the fountain jet.
And we hear, I hear that from citizens on occasion. Ideas to save money is to not run the fountain at night when no one can see it. So why are you running it at night?
Well, it helps augment the water quality for the lake because our normal run schedule is from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And then if we, during the fall, we can do that. But in the summer, when the water quality starts to degrade, we need to keep the water moving overnight. So there's a 12-hour period there that if we didn't run it, then we'd start to run into other issues like algae and lake odor and stuff like that. So we found that if we get ahead of that and run it, starting most of the time in around April or May, during the nighttime hours and a little bit in the morning, it helps keep the lake stirred up enough so that those don't become big issues for us.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
I've heard people report that the lights are still on at night though, in the middle of the night. Can they be turned off?
Yes. Councilmember Hanson, yes, we're working on trying to have it where we can get the program set so that the lights don't have to come on and we'll have some additional savings there. We're looking at changing the, it's called a PLC, it's the little program that runs the fountain. And we've been offered a proposal to be able to change that so we can not have the lights come on at night. And hopefully that'll, we'll be able to do that here in the next couple of months, once we get into the new budget year.
Good God, Tom Andrew.
Mayor and council, a couple of other things you might want to be aware of. First, recommendations also came from Councilmember Hanson and others on the council with regard to a software modification we're making that will preempt the fountain from running on windy days instead of going up, then sensing that it's too windy and coming down. And so we'll be excited to report to you what kind of results we get from that. Also, keep in mind that while we do run the fountain at night in order to aerate the lake, the next stage that we will probably need to go to is installation of an adequately sized aeration system. And why that's not in this year's budget is because earlier projections or estimates of what that was going to cost were way low of what the actual cost came in at when we went out and did a little bit more research. Our aquatics consultant thought it would be in the neighborhood of about, I think, $30,000, Mark? I can't remember. And actually came in at about $100,000 to upgrade our aeration system. But in addition to that, there's a cost of about $50,000 a year in power to run that new aeration system. So as the, as we go along in time, the water quality needs to be continually monitored and we will probably need to come back to you and discuss more significant adaptations to our aeration system. So kind of a heads up from about four or five months from now when we talk about this again.
Councilmember Rauckey.
I was just curious if you'd budget any money for advertising for the rest of the state and the nation that we're not going down to five minutes, so people will actually come here now.
We have.
It's tongue-in-cheek.
Yeah, I was going to say, we have it, but maybe someone else could handle that. But yeah, I think, you know, as far as the, back to Fountain Park and its operation, I think things are going pretty good. And I've got a very good park lead down there who's really helped to keep the park as green as it looks over the last 10 months. So just wanted to give him kudos again on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any of the parks?
On the Golden Eagle.
Golden Eagle Park, this year is budgeted at $375,422. Next year, we're programming $316,577, which is a reduction of 15.7 percent. Here again, as Dawn mentioned, the park staff has made significant efforts to find ways to reduce the costs of maintaining the parks with minimal impact on the way the parks look to our residents. And here again, that savings is reflected in just selective reductions in park maintenance.
Regarding the Golden Eagle and probably Desert Vista, maybe even Four Peaks, I know some of the organizations like Little League and Soccer have, or talked to us about wanting to make sure that they have grass to run on. And I think in the past, they've offered to assist in paying for some of the costs and then maybe others didn't factor in that once you, you can pay for the grass, then we might need some additional assistance to pay for the mowing that would now be needed that wouldn't be budgeted. Where are we at on working with our partners to, those organizations to pick up some of the cost if they do want to maintain the winter grass or summer grass, whichever one?
I know for a fact that one of the partners has stepped up already to offer to pay for the overseeding. I don't know if Mark has any update on that.
Like the main thing is, I'm sure it is, is communications open between these groups because I don't want them to get into a season and then have them say, oh, I wish the town would have asked for 10 grand and we could have had the grass for another season.
Yeah, as you stated, Mayor, several of those organizations have stepped up. The Soccer Club has offered to pay for the overseeding and the additional mowing at Desert Vista. And at Golden Eagle in particular, though, the Little League has also, over the past few years, has stepped up and paid for the overseeding and the mowing at, some of the mowing, not the mowing, but the overseeding at Golden Eagle. The mowing at Golden Eagle, most of that's done in-house. And thanks to my staff there, too, they decided they felt like they could save the town some money by doing the mowing and the trimming in-house, and it's worked out pretty good so far. They've also expanded it over to Desert, not Desert Vista, but Four Peaks, where they also mow there once a week to reduce the annual landscape cost that we used to incur from that.
So next winter, Desert Vista should be overseeded?
Yes, they, the Soccer Club has offered to pay for that for us.
Okay. How about the Four Peaks?
Four Peaks, nobody stepped up, so, and that facility's not being used as much for those activities, so it's, still won't be overseeded this year.
Any other changes like that that we would expect next fiscal year with cooperating groups?
Just the Soccer, the Soccer Club and Little League, so both of those clubs.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want me to continue on with Four Peaks and Desert Vista, or we've got our questions addressed on the park?
Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, on 140, on Four Peaks Park, it seemed like the electricity was kind of high there. It was more than even at Desert Vista, and there seemed to be fewer lights. And Dawn just said it wasn't being used as much, so I was curious why their electricity would be more.
I'm not specifically sure why it would be a little bit more, but over the past years, we've spent more money there for the Little League practices and the afternoon activities that go on over there. Like you were saying, it's not as much as we have at Desert Vista currently. So when we get the billing at the end of this year, we'll see is Desert Vista, is it actually costing more to run that facility with the lights than over at Four Peaks? Basically, I based my expenditures there when I initially did it for Desert Vista on what Four Peaks cost was during the year before that. And they both use, it's pretty close as to the electricity. I didn't look at the numbers, but saw 11,000 and 12,000. See, so they're both pretty close. I, like I said, don't have any specifics on that answer yet, so maybe we'll determine that later.
And then also on the water, the water at Four Peaks is 27,000 compared to 2,500 at Desert Vista. Now, we know, of course, Desert Vista uses effluent.
Yes, yes.
And so, and potable at Four Peaks.
Mm-hmm.
And I know this has been hashed before, but, you know, any thoughts of looking again at trying to get effluent there instead of using potable water?
Yeah, there's been some efforts to determine whether it'll be feasible to bring effluent into the facility at Four Peaks. We're still working with the sanitary district to see when they might want to help us make that happen. Currently, we haven't been talking to them about it, but we'll bring that back up again to see if we can make that happen.
And the electric, I know what I, I know Councilmember Hanson's crystal clear on Four Peaks Park, because she's been here for a while, like most of us here. But it's more than just that soccer field, it's the baseball diamonds as well.
Yes.
So I think, I know those lights are on for a variety of different reasons, primarily probably Little League and softball and, but it includes more than the soccer fields. My first thought was that is high, too. And I remembered the park across the wash, the baseball diamonds would be included, those big lights that are similar to what's up at Desert Vista.
Yes, Mayor. The South Athletic Field is what we call that area, and they do use quite a bit of electricity when we're using them. And it's primarily used by the Little League for their practices. They don't play games there, but they practice there many nights. And also when flag football is in season, they also use the facility to practice in the evenings at night. So that's why the electricity costs are pretty similar. So that's why I said I based, when I first started Desert Vista's budget, I based it on what was going on over there. But now, a lot of those activities have kind of converted or moved over to Desert Vista. So that's the reason why they put a little more there.
Good. Any other questions on the parks by council? Councilmember Cantino, did you have a question?
No, Cassie had one.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dawn. Before a nature break, I think we can get through the rest of the operating budget. Do we need a break? It's, we've got a few more departments. Think we can make it? Good.
The next department would be on page 149, and that's law enforcement. Again, because this is a contracted service, the only thing that you're seeing under salaries, benefits, and taxes is a result of that program budgeting. And it's a piece of our customer service representatives who do dog licensing because the dog licensing program is considered a program of law enforcement. Again, what you're seeing here is a reduction of about 3 percent in law enforcement costs, and that is primarily as a result of the renegotiation of the contract with MCSO. Any questions?
I have a, just to thank you. Thank you for helping us to get through the hard time here. And of course, thanks for the service. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, I know that people were aware that we were going through with the new contract. And Andrew, I don't know if you can just sort of give a little brief on how it's still in effect and it just rolled over and maybe what might be coming next with that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, I don't even really want to guess what's coming next based upon our discussions to this point. But the contract, when it was renewed several years ago, included a provision that allows it to automatically roll over if certain conditions are met. It allows a period for, I guess, during the early stages of the budget for the town council to consider whether or not it wants to renew the contract. If both parties do nothing, it will roll over from year to year with annual increases capped. This year, the MCSO was kind enough to say that the annual increases would not happen when we're going to have a reduction in the cost. That was very helpful in terms of preparing this budget. But also, we've talked about some operational refinements of the contract. There isn't really anything that is significantly different about what's being discussed other than refine some language. So potentially, at some time in the near future, you may see a very small modification in the contract come forward with just some more descriptive and potentially tweaked provisions on how the services are provided and a couple of clarifications on specific services. But we haven't come to any kind of an agreement with MCSO on it yet, so I'm really not going to guess at whether or not we're going to have anything like that anytime soon.
And Andrew, Mayor, the reason I wanted to bring it up was just because there was some question about, did it actually get renewed? And so I wanted to assure everybody that it's absolutely in place and we can do these things at a later time.
Councilmember Rauckey.
I just had one quick question, Mayor. The prisoner fees, what does that entail exactly? Is that transport or what is that exactly?
It doesn't include any costs of transport because that's typically done by the posse. But it does include the housing, the actual incarceration costs for prisoners that are transferred to the jail.
Are these costs just on the night of the arrest or the sentencing costs where's people that may need to be housed at the jail as part of their sentence after going through the court?
It includes both.
It includes both. Okay. Thank you.
If there are no more questions on law enforcement, we'll move on to fire. And here again, the contract with Rural Metro calls for an automatic escalation of 3 percent. And in the first edition of the budget, you saw those costs. The costs you're now seeing are without that escalation clause. And so that represents now a reduction in the budget for fire from $3,65,477 this year to $3,42,411, which means that not only did they not escalate, they reduced their budget.
Definitely another big thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Rural Metro, for serving our community well.
And that concludes the operating components of the town budget. If there are other areas of the budget that the council would like to review, I'm open to any questions on any of the other funds.
I suspect there are, let me just get a feel how we're doing, councilmembers. If each of you have some items you wish to discuss related to other items in the budget, let me know, and then I'll decide if we should take a break here and, or just continue on. This is the, this is the agenda item for the night. We have much more to discuss outside of the operational budget? Or a request of others to go through more than what we touched on, just briefly on some of those revenue items that Councilmember Dickey brought up? Any other parts of the budget we wish staff to go over with us? Councilmember Hanson.
Maybe getting into some of the performance measures might just make for some good discussion. I mean, since they kind of indicate what each department wants to move forward with this year. And I think at the last meeting, too, we did leave it where, when Andrew brought up the possibility of, we could continue this at a work study on Tuesday.
up the possibility of we could continue this at a work study on Tuesday, it was desired to split it up into two nights.
We could. Any other comments? The, does any, councilmembers, are there any comments along the lines of what Councilmember Hanson shared on going into the next section with the performance measures? And then maybe Councilmember Hanson can talk about what extent, so we can get an idea of how much time to allocate. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, in other words, we're going to go through the pages, or just that people already have, already decided that they had questions there?
Yeah.
Because I don't have any questions through there.
Anybody else have a comment on the performance measure section? Councilmember LaChee?
I've reviewed it. We've had this budget now for several, you know, several weeks. I've reviewed it, and I feel comfortable with the rhyme, reasoning rationale for the performance measurement. So I have no need to discuss it. Of course, if others, members of the council want to discuss it, then I, that's comfortable with me.
Town manager, Davis. The performance measures, can you describe those a little bit, is how the departments approach them and put them together, what they follow, perhaps, generally?
Sure. Mayor and council, there's two ways to approach performance measures. The first is obviously a measure of those indicators that may show or illustrate efficiencies that we're either realizing or failing to realize. And then those measures that we utilize in order to measure our effectiveness in realizing the council goals. There is a third set also, is if we are participating in a broader benchmarking effort, we might measure those. And it depends, as to date, we have not entered into a regional benchmarking type of effort. I used to be involved in such an effort, and it's very, very helpful. I'd like to move forward with that in the future, where that's going to require some cooperation with other communities, and it's a little bit complex. So right now, our performance measures are, measurements are focused on two areas. Again, efficiency measuring and goal realization measuring. So that serves as the basis, the motive, and a platform for our performance measures.
Okay. Councilmember Hanson, can you help me understand what degree you think we'd be getting into this?
It might not be so much about what the performance measures are. It might be some of the goals expressed in those performance measures that might be some dialogue with some additional things going forward. Like on page 186, we've got the information technology. And it's pretty impressive. I mean, we look at, now Mike is taking on the Channel 11, and so for, his broadcast messages for last year was zero because he didn't do it, and now it's going to be 250 for the coming year. He successfully brought the website in-house and has totally revamped it, and it's much more user-friendly. That was a goal that we had brought up at last, during last year's budget time, and one that has been completed very successfully. But one thought that came to mind with the Channel 11 is possibly looking at what our current policy is, and do we want to look at modifying it. I had mentioned to the town manager the possibility of, for example, videotaping the substance abuse coalition meetings, because a lot of good information comes out on that, and the possibility of having that broadcast on Channel 11 is an educational-type thing. So I mean, that's an example of, you know, looking at the performance measure and then coming up with something that might be beneficial to look at during the coming year. So that's kind of some of the conversation I was thinking of.
All right. I'm trying to measure, manage, help manage us through the budget process and not try to encapsulate the entire year's discussions into just the budget item. I think you, exactly what you've said, we've shared this throughout a couple of meetings, that Channel 11 and the policy for what's included and on the website, as well as other things, is a topic for us to get into at a work study. Just not sure how to, I mean, I like the idea of having dialogue. I just don't, I want to be as practical as we can in going through, I mean, each item you could look at, for the most part, and think that'd be a good dialogue to have. But how effective are we going to be in addressing the budget?
Okay.
You have another sample, yeah.
We don't have any performance measures for, and maybe we never have, but for the town attorney, and the public defender, and the prosecutor. And I just wondered if they would not have performance measures as well.
By the time the budget is concluded, I will get those from them.
Oh, you're waiting on them. So, you know, that was good to find out.
I don't think we can use the term waiting when never been asked. It's probably the actual one. We'd be happy to put together performance measures. I'm just not sure exactly what it is that we would put. I mean, we send a 25-page bill to the town every month that details in six-minute increments every single thing that we do. Be happy to somehow encapsulate how that works. But it's difficult. In terms of prosecution, I know that Mark and I have talked about that as well, that it's difficult to make a benchmark for how many people you're going to go out and prosecute, or how many trials you might do, because you just don't know what's going to come through the court. And you can guesstimate based upon what you've done in previous years and say, we expect to do about the same. And if that's what we need to put in there, we can certainly do that.
It just looks odd.
Okay. There'll be something in there. And I think there's contract, whatever we're responsible to pay you, maybe that's included in here. I don't know what we include in here. But town manager, Davis, you wanted to
Yes, Mayor, council.
Help us out here.
Yeah. Not too long ago, some months ago, we did an analysis on the amount of service or quantify the amount of service per hour or, and created a ratioed relationship with how much we were spending as a means of comparing what we were getting against other cities. Some of that might be helpful and could be utilized. That's about the only way that I can determine to be effective in measuring performance. We wouldn't necessarily be measuring the town attorney's performance, but our performance in contracting for legal services would probably be a more relevant measure, since we contract out for that service, be a more measure of our effectiveness.
I think Councilmember Hanson, what I'm, and there are a couple of examples which are good, and I think you're right. Where if we're going to have performance measures, we have departments in here that are blank. We don't want to have blank parts of our budget. The, some of the things you're speaking on are items that we cover at a work study or more, probably more broadly, we'll cover at a goal-setting discussion. If there's things we want to start doing more of or less of, let's encapsulate that and great gather it and make sure we're all going down. And I think there's so many different things that we could all bring to talk to each one of these departments. I don't think it's going to be real practical to do through this budget. We have goals that we give staff, that we hold them accountable to, and then they figure out how they're going to get them done. But those goals are what we come up with at the goal-setting meeting or work-study sessions where we can have that dialogue. I'd be happy to go through things myself or in due with staff, but I'm not sure how helpful it would be to continue with in a budget session.
Just one more?
Yes.
That I do feel fairly strongly about?
You bet.
On 194, economic development. The activities and outcomes were just about cut in half from last year. And one thing that did get removed that I think should go back in was in last year, there was an activity to develop contacts and strong positive working relationships with Fort McDowell, the Chamber, and other business groups in order to work together towards mutually beneficial goals. And I do feel that that should be added back in.
So it's on the productivity portion, or part of it is, but it's not in the activity outcome section spelt out?
Right.
As much, okay.
Well, and the, and the Chamber was specifically left off.
Maybe we could, is there a reason for that change? Obviously, we're working with the Chamber, staff's working with the Chamber, staffs were meeting with Fort McDowell regularly. Is it just abbreviated?
Yeah, it's not a local organization.
No, I mean, it would fit, could fit within that, but...
It was just much more specific last year.
Okay.
You know, Mayor and council, I think since recently, I've become the primary liaison with Fort McDowell, and perhaps that measure may be out of go. I'm just thinking it might go into my section. And that's something that's happened pretty recently. So we certainly didn't mean to leave that off, but I think it just got misplaced a little bit. So I'm going to be arranging for those meetings and, and also the school district relationship as well, being managed by Julie.
And so it was...
I just think it's important that our economic development division works closely with the Chamber.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's
But it's not in here, is what you're saying?
Correct.
It's not written in here. Yeah, I would imagine perhaps with the, the position changes and the responsibilities, perhaps that one was, should remain in here? Is there, is there a reason why maybe it wouldn't be in here?
I can work with the, all the individuals involved, because there's a number of people who are involved with the Chamber from various angles, and make sure that the performance measures are updated to include it all.
Good. I mean, yes, Councilmember Dickey?
Just to let you know that when we talked about performance measures a couple of meetings ago, and I had emailed some information to MCSO, so on, and I brought it up at a meeting, and that will also be a change that we'll see, that we'll see, too. So very satisfactory. And then there was like a typo or something like that. So those have been graciously taken care of.
Want to help us through that with some additions coming before our next council meeting? Can you please make sure those are pointed out clearly so that we can find them before the meeting?
Hopefully, Mayor, members of the council, hopefully you should be receiving the updated pages, I'm hoping, within the next week or so.
Okay. So that'd give us a week to review the changes before our next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Any other items in the budget to go over? Oh, thank you, Beth. Called her a speaker card. Yeah, may as well do that now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, again, good evening. What I'd like to talk to you about this evening with regard to your budget is one item that I think is, I have to ask you the question, what's the most important asset this town has? I'll answer it for you. It's the fountain. That's what everybody who visits this town looks at, comes to somehow, whether it's a neighbor, a friend, it's that fountain that brings them here. Plus the beautiful surroundings. What I need to address tonight is with regard to the budget of Fountain Hills is the contribution of $129,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, for the Tourism Bureau. The best advertising for tourism for the town of Fountain Hills is our fabulous fountain. As we all know, it's been stated, excuse me, that a savings of $60,000 annually would be realized to the town if we run the fountain for five minutes per hour instead of the present 15 minutes per hour. Excuse me, I know you've changed that in what I've heard tonight. But all of the negative publicity Fountain Hills has received from the possible reduction of the fountain runtime to date has not been really very good, as we all know. As we all know, businesses will suffer losses in revenue, resulting in town sales tax losses. Home values will depreciate, and a good school system will have problems. We all need to turn a very large negative into a very large positive. Mr. Mayor and council, members, here is how we can do this. As stated, if the reduction of a 10-minute, excuse me, as stated, if the reduction of a 10-minute fountain runtime has a savings of $60,000 annually, which is 2/3 of the, of the present runtime, one can deduce that each five minutes of runtime during a 15-minute cycle costs $30,000 annually. Then 15 minutes of the runtime as per the existing scheduled costs, $90,000 annually. I spoke to Mark Mayor, head of Parks and Rec today, just to confirm, as was previously stated, approximately half of the electric bill cost is due to the fountain startup costs. When those pumps go on, approximately 50% of the electric cost is when they start up. If that's the case, therefore, you could run the fountain 30 minutes per hour for an additional $45,000 annually.
I'll give you another minute, Mr. Marsella, since you've been here all night for hours.
Okay, thank you. And utilize our biggest asset to promote Fountain Hills more efficiently and effectively. To pay for the additional expense, Fountain Hills can take the $45,000 from the contribution to the Tourism Bureau. As Mayor and council, please exercise more control over our town's future by earmarking and investing these tourism dollars to utilize the fountain by promoting it better than we do presently for the betterment of Fountain, of the Fountain Hills community. Also, as a bonus, the lake's water would be further aerated by a factor of two, therefore, better odor and algae control. A win-win for the town of Fountain Hills. We could then invite the valley's TV news stations and newspapers to view our longer-running fountain and try to, excuse me, and try to turn all the negative publicity into a positive image for publicity for the future, both locally and hopefully nationally. For name's sake, Fountain Hills is an outstanding, fabulous town with a fabulous fountain, not, not a fabulous town of just hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsella.
So understand, thank you, understand that the money is here. You control it. You don't have to give it to somebody else to try and hopefully put it to something else to try and get them here. If the fountain runs longer, people will be here longer, and the money you're already expending it to giving them anyway. You spend it on the fountain. You'll bring the people here. You can't lose. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Thank you very much, Beth. The, I was asking other items in the budget to go forward, go over tonight. The, help me understand process now. Mary, the
The next item that would need to be addressed is if the council feels that the maximum dollar amount that has been established at $33,627,020 is going to be sufficient to accomplish what the council would like to see accomplished next year, and we can still work through the minor changes that they might want to see. You could go ahead with the motion to approve the resolution adopting the maximum. And then we could continue if the council would like to have continuing meetings to discuss line items in the budget.
Appreciate, okay. Thank you, Mary.
May.
Councilmember Dickey?
Move to approve Resolution 2010-22, adopting the maximum amount for the town's fiscal year 2010-11 tentative budget.
Second. All right. Any discussion on this motion? Very good. And that was it on the call of the speaker cards? All right, thank you. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Give your roll call.
I'm sorry?
Roll call.
Roll call, Beth.
Mayor Schlumpf?
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember LaChee?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0?
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
If, Councilmember Hanson?
As you mentioned earlier, since the budget is a planning tool for the council, I think it would be helpful to possibly have a work study for certain things that did appear in the document that might have some merit in discussing further. One thing, like when we talked about the possibility of taking the vehicle replacement fund and maybe not contributing this year. contributing this year, and using those funds maybe to offset our portion of the transportation program grant, that type of discussion.
Do you have, do you have an amount of time you would think we would need, or from, in your opinion, to talk about additional items? I mean, we're going to have, obviously, another council meeting where we'll adopt the budget, but outside of that, add a work study?
Possibly a work study, just in a more, this is the one time of year that, you know, there's a lot of information in here, and even some of the fees that appear in the back, I really kind of had some questions on fees. And, you know, that's not something that would affect approving the budget, but I think it's worthwhile discussion to have.
Okay. Now, any thoughts on the council related to work study? We did talk about having that. Councilmember Elke?
I would agree with Councilmember Hanson that a work study would be appropriate here, just so, you know, it is our last opportunity to really sit down as a group and kind of hash out, hash out any last questions or anything like that before approving the final budgets. I'd be in favor of that.
Appreciate. And we'd like, as I mentioned, we did talk about having it on Tuesday. Is that correct? Is that still our placeholder? Andrew, does he have something to share?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only schedule that really has any statutory obligations attached to it are the gaps of time that are necessary between the tentative budget adoption, final budget adoption, and a tax levy. The next item on the agenda, I guess, is where we're at right now, that we've adopted the resolution, calls for canceling the July 1 meeting and all the rest of meetings in July. The idea was that the tax levy would be handled the first meeting in August, so that the statutory gap is easily met there. The only problem that you have with the tax levies, it has to be done before the third Monday in August, so we have two meetings, or at least one meeting, that, one regular meeting and a work study, that you could put those on if necessary. And so as long as you have your final budget adoption at the 17th meeting, anything prior to that time is fine. We just need to keep it on that track. If it didn't happen on the 17th, we would have to hold the July 1 meeting to get the final budget adoption then in order to make the tax levy work.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, we don't need a motion to call a work study, do we? We're just gonna, we have one scheduled, and we'll just keep it. And let's just make sure we have staff ready for us, since you have now Monday, to get ready for, or Monday and Tuesday, get ready for our work study. Let's, each council member chime in a little bit, if you would, on what you want to cover, so staff's totally ready to rock and roll on what we want to cover. I had also written down the fee schedule. I think that's an item to go over. Councilmember Hanson, maybe if you have some other items you can mention, and anything else that would be helpful. Councilmember Elke, being a new council member and coming into this, is your first meeting. I know that work study will benefit you as well. So if there's anything that's coming to mind right now, or if you let staff know as quick as possible, if there's something else you want to have added to, not the agenda of the work study, but just to have them prepared, let them know or let me know. Anything else council would benefit from at the work study on Tuesday night? Anything else, Councilmember Hanson? Is that good enough, Mary? All right, good. All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is in one of these books, is item 6, consideration of canceling Fountain Hills Town Council July 2010 meetings. We get a motion for that.
No moves.
Anyone speaking on that item?
Yes, sir.
Councilmembers, any discussion? And thank you, Andrew, for helping us understand the process, so we can get by with having that meeting in August. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor 70?
Thank you very much. Item 7, just council discussion direction to the town manager. Apart from what we talked about related to budget items, was there anything specifically we asked the town manager to follow up on? All right. Item 8, there's nothing there. And I guess, item 9, town manager, anything to report on?
I wouldn't do that to you after this.
Thank you.
I have too much regard for you.
No, I think you did a good job. Thank you very much, Mary. You did a great job getting us through this, and thank you, staff, for answering many of our questions. I think this is helpful. And councilmembers, look for a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
All right, first and second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And welcome, Tate. Thank you for being a part of the team here.